Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the February 17th School Board Workshop. Want to go ahead and get started and call the meeting to order. We do have some agenda amendments that were done. The Chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments. On February 17, 2023, Agenda updated February 13, 2023, and posted to the district website, manateeschools.net. And just some information, obviously, for the Board and public. The Agenda Amendments was only us adding Monday. We added the presentation on to the Agenda. We did not have that Friday when we posted it. The Agenda, the presentations went on there. So we added those presentations on Monday, and that was the amendments. So that's it. So those have been on since Monday. We start with item number one, Review Board Discussion of Proposed Amendments to School Board Policies. Mr. Chapman, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Morning, Board.
Morning.
So we've, on Tuesday, the Board approved the advertising of these set of policies. And so that starts the clock on the 30-day public comment period. And so this is the Board Workshop to discuss these policies that are out now for public comment. And then the public hearing and then vote on these will be at the March 28 Board Meeting. So what you have in front of you is, I know it's a lot of pages, but really the bulk of it is just a change, a little edit in some of them. But I'll go through them and then take some questions. So the first set there, the 1-1, the 1-2-1s, .01s, is, that's just a change in statute where now school districts will need to perform background checks a little more frequently than what was previously stated in the law. So it's a process now where you'll see it in there that, you know, if you were hired before this date or hired before this date, there's now a due date to be re-screened again. It doesn't mean that the individual employee has to themselves be screened. It's our, you know, contractor who does this will just run the system again. And that, you know, the reason for that, why the statute was changed is so that if a, you know, felony charge or something like that is in your record, that will pick up because you've been re-screened now. So that's the reason for the change in law. It kind of makes it more frequent now that school districts have to re-screen their employees through the background screener to see if, you know, anything is picked up that hasn't been voluntarily been admitted to their supervisor. So that's the change there. In 1-1-2-2, 31-2-2, 41-2-2, and 22-60, this is, again, a minor edit due to recent legislation, HB7, essentially that it makes an unlawful, making it unlawful discrimination to subjects, students, employees, or any individual to any activity that espouses, promotes, or vance and calculates, that's a good word, or compels them to believe that certain concepts are discriminatory. So you'll see a minor edit in those four policies. Then if you look at 1-1-2-2 .01, 31-2-22-01, 41-22-01, and then the 62s and the 5-5-1-7, those have all been edited due to a change in our Chief of Human Resources, Chief of Human Resources. So that's just a minor edit to make sure that the new Chief of Human Resources reflected in those policies. 25-20 is actually kind of what we did at the Board Meeting on Tuesday, where it, again, is updating that policy due to state statute on how to handle instructional materials and classroom library materials. So we've, of course, we've talked about that at length, but that's now putting that in our policy 25-20. 31-20-04 is a change. There was a change in a rule. Those are Department of Education rules. And so we made sure that that policy was updated due to that rule. 8100 and 9800 deal with, really, our charter schools, again statutory change. So we had to make some changes there to those two policies which deal with charter schools. 84-07, our Safe School Policy, Officer Policy, that, again, is due to a rule from the Department of Education where essentially says, you know, there just needs to be a procedure in place with the Chief of Safety and Security in our schools to make sure that discussion is made and whether there needs to be a Safe School Officer, essentially a guardian, or an SRO at after-school activities or during the summer. And so there just needs to be a procedure in place to make sure that a discussion is made to see if that's necessary at those events that happen after school or in the summer. And then 91-42 is revising a policy that we have as a result of a change in statute and making sure that that policy is now up to date to current statute and law. And so that policy has been edited. So that's the group of policies that are before you, that, again, are out for public comment. And you all will have a chance to have a public hearing on March 28 and then a vote on them at that Board Meeting. So I'll stop there and take any questions.
Thanks. We don't have our legislative, so we're just going to go from left to right. So, Ms. Messenger, you're up first.
Just for my reminder, the green edits are from Neola?
Yes, yes. So, correct. The green edits are for Neola except for, except for, let's see here. He writes, and then they should have been in purple. So let's say in, so in the 1-1-2-2-01 set of policies and the 13-62, the 62 policy, 5-1-17, the Chief of Human Resources edit probably should have been in purple because that's our edit of saying there's a new Chief in Human Resources. The 84-7, it is a revision because of a statutory change, but that language is essentially coming from us. So that should have been in purple even though it's based on that rule. The rule didn't say you need to add this to your, this exact language to your policy. What it said was, come up with a procedure. So we have the procedure. We felt like we need to add to make sure that the policy reflects that we now have a procedure on that. So that should have been purple. And then 91-42 is actually a Manatee County policy. So those edits should have been in, should have been in purple. So that's a good point, Mrs. Messenger, and I apologize for...
Okay. I had, so all of the policies that are getting changed because the Chief of HR position, I remember in other policies, we've, instead of continually changing names or titles or whatever, that instead we put something, and I thought, like, under all these, that he's listed as a compliance officer. Can we instead create, like, compliance officer at manateeschools.net so that it's continually there? It's consistent, and employee knows, hey, I always can always just email this one, and it's going to go to the appropriate person instead of continually changing names and titles?
I completely understand your point. I'd have to check with legal counsel because the person needs to... This is Kevin talking, not legal counsel. Then I'll let legal counsel. My understanding is, an employee needs to know who they're contacting. If there is a, let's say, a sexual harassment complaint or, you know, a serious complaint, instead of just emailing some random complaint, you know, at manateeschools.net, they're actually emailing and the direct phone number to the Chief of Human Resources to say, something has happened. I need you to investigate. So, but if that's Kevin talking, I'll let legal counsel.
Ms. Messenger, good morning. Title IX was revised approximately two years ago that, actually, as Mr. Chapman stated it perfectly, they need a name with, for Equity Coordinator that would go up, and also the Review Officer as well. So this was a change which would be pursuant to statute. And I agree with Mr. Chapman. It just can't be a blank person. They wanted you to know who to contact in that particular instance.
And I get that. It's just, it's so cumbersome that we have, I think I counted 11 policies that came back before us that it's really just a change in name and title and...
I wish I could just make...
I wish I could just, yeah, just say, okay, well, it's, at least there'd be some consistency. But I also understand your point of, that's accountability. I get that.
There should be a reduction in Paper Act or something because it's a lot of...
Policy 25-20, you're right, that has come before us recently, but...
A few times, and it'll probably come to you again as the legislature is working on these issues.
There was some changes in here about the adoption of materials. Now I want to go find it.
I'm going to give you a page number here.
I know. I think it would be helpful next time for that review page to also have page numbers because you named a few other ones and I want to go...
Well, page 92-93 or 302-303, whatever.
I have none of those page numbers on here, so that's fine. But there was specific items on there about the purchasing of materials and the approval of the materials. Like, when we adopt materials, it needs to be a separate item, non-consent. Totally agree with that. When we purchase materials, it says it also needs to be a separate line item, non-consent. And I, my question was about the definition of instructional materials and what that will look like because to me, when we choose a curriculum, that should come before us. That should be a separate item. I want everyone to know, hey, we're going to look at this curriculum and adopt this curriculum. And, you know, I think that's usually even a public hearing. Like, I support that. But let's say we're in the second year of that curriculum. What this says to me is that every time we purchase any one of those items, even though it's a reoccurring purchase, that will still come before us as new business, non-consent. Am I understanding that policy correct?
You're raising a very good question. This is language straight from Neola. So, and I'd have to go back and look at the actual statute that was passed by the legislature to see if there's wording like "new materials" or actually defining the materials because your point is very valid. I don't have a very good answer for you right now.
I mean, I'm totally in favor of, like, when it's new, like I said, like, when it's new or something different or, like, I think that should be. But if we're in the second or third year into whatever, does that really still need to come in that same manner? That doesn't really seem efficient or necessary. So I guess I'd be curious to know how that that complies with the law in that manner. If the law specifically says that, then of course we'll do it. But if it doesn't, I don't think that that's necessarily the most efficient way. And then the other question I had was about the New World's Reading Program and the changes again. And I know that the legislature just went through that and changed some of this about the New World's Reading Program. But it seems now, in the past, the New World's Reading Program, and in the past, I mean, before this, this year, where they kind of, I mean, they revamped it, but the years before that, it was really run, not by the state, it was run by UF. I think UF got the money in a grant or something, and UF...
That is correct.
Did it? But in this language, it's now looking as if the district is responsible for delivering the books. Am I understanding that correctly?
But we have a partnership with them, so we would still, yes, or this, yes. But we are, they work with us to distribute the materials. So it's, it's still that way. Fortunately, the one in charge is in my leadership, Florida Cadre. I will see her in March to make sure that that's our understanding, that it will continue the way it is.
Okay, because that was something I read there and I was like, gosh, that's like, that's a big change because you're putting it, instead of it being this state-funded, state, I mean, it's not wasn't state-run, it was run by UF. But, I mean, it is really all done by the state. Now it's putting it more back in the district's lap. And that's, to me, like, I love New World's Reading. It's a great program, but that's really cumbersome for another thing for the district to have to manage, something like this. So I'm glad that that's that. I had a few other questions, but I want, I want to go back because you said that 84-07 and 91-42 were the ones that were district edits. And so I want to, I want to review those really quick. I did review them, but I want to review them again now knowing that. And then I'll come back. So, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Bray wants to talk. Okay. Ms. Bray, you were up. She's not muted. It doesn't show in the bottom left, does it?
You may need to tell her.
Yeah. Are you telling her, Kelly? Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, there we go. We hear you now.
Okay. The care provider for the background screening, is that the same company we use all the time, we've been using?
I believe that is actually the name of the State Clearinghouse System. The, I don't know the name of the company that we use, but they run, the clearinghouse is actually the state database of, that holds all these records. That's just the official name for the State Clearinghouse for background screenings.
Okay. And then, and then your page 92, Policy 25-20, Instructional Materials, in the green halfway down the page, it says, "A meeting of Committee of Purpose of Ranking, Eliminating or Selecting Instructional Material for Recommendation. The Board must be noticed to open the public in accordance to FS 8286-011. A committee convened and such for purposes must include parents and districts and students." I just wanted to make everyone aware of that change, that this committee would have a lot of community input. And then it goes on, again, as Ms. Messenger say, that this, all of that would have to be on non-consent. It would have to be a line item of its own. And then following along on page 93 of the same statute, that, it says, "By any instructional staff." That's what I'm asking. On the first paragraph, effective July 2022, each newly book made available to students through our centers. Is that by any instructional staff or by just the media specialist?
Ms. Bray, are you talking about what's in green?
Yes.
Effective July 1st. Each book newly made available to students through a school library, media center, or included, or included in a recommended or assigned school or grade level reading list must be selected and approved by a district employee who holds a valid educational media center certificate regardless of whether the book is purchased, donated, or otherwise made available to students. So like we talked about on Tuesday, a certified media center specialist is the only one who can approve a media center material.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on that. And the Board will purchase the next paragraph in green. All materials is a separate line item, as Ms. Messenger had said. And then quickly over to, well, Ms. Messenger also brought that up, the New World Reading Initiative. I had the same policy highlighted to ask questions about, but she brought that up as well. And under 9800 Charter Schools, we changed a couple of mechanical terms. But if you look at AB, due to deteriorating financial conditions or financial emergencies, the term pursuant of FS 1002, this is all going to go, and I'm going to have a conversation about that later, about that. But I just wanted to point it out that due to deteriorate financial conditions, I guess that's going back to some other issues we've had. But those are the ones I really wanted to point out and had questions about. Other than that, I'm okay. Thank you.
I want to follow up on something Ms. Messenger was talking about. If we are concerned about people having the name of a person to contact in a complaint, we're doing a pretty poor job of it because the name of the person changed more than six months ago. So if we have it on our website and we can change it on our website, change the name of the person, you know, I don't know quite how we would do that, but rather than have a name, we have a position for the name of that person or contact information for that person, go to, and then have a valid link. I just think it's going to be a much smoother, not only do we not have to change policy, but we also have better communication with people. So I'm just putting that out there. I would really like us to consider that before we do that. Okay.
Before you go, can I, can we get that question asked, or do you even have knowledge of what that answer was? When you talked about the website, like, do we change the name on the website as soon as we move from one chief? Is the name changed?
Yes, yes. The, the policy written in the actual policy lab...
But, but at least the email, okay, I just wanted to make...
Yes, yeah.
Answer that for you.
Yeah, we have a whole department who handles labor relation, you know, labor relations. But I understand your point, so we'll work on that.
Please reconsider. Okay, Policy 25-20. The first paragraph on page 90, on 93. This policy is about purchase of instructional materials. That paragraph that's being added there is about purchasing media books. I think it complicates or the issue. The only thing that really, as related to instructional materials, would be that it's a required, a reading list, a required reading list, an optional reading list. But Clifford the Big Red Dog doesn't fit in this.
I, I understand your point. In the two pieces of legislation, Senate Bill 1048 and Senate Bill 2524, that was added to the Instructional Materials section of the legislation. So that is pulled straight out of the legislation into this policy by Neola because it's actually in that legislation. So the legislature's added media center purchasing, media center material purchasing language to this instructional material language.
So are we going to have to approve the purchase of Clifford the Big Red Dog?
Well, I understand what you're saying. No, because the, I see what you're, I see what you're saying. So what you're saying is, correct me if I'm wrong, is that because that is in the instructional, the purchasing of instructional materials policy, that it would mean that potentially what you're suggesting is that the purchasing of media center materials would also have to be approved by the Board. But it's, it's, it's clear in this policy that it's not in the purchase of instructional materials section. It's before that. So my...
We can make it more clear?
Sure, sure. We can, we can do that.
I don't ever want us to get in, in the, you know, us or future boards to go, oh, we've got to approve all of these. So if it can, if a sentence can be added or something, then it's only, it's going to include only required reading lists need the approval of the Board. This is Neola's wording on this?
Yes, taken pretty much word for word from, from, from the legislation that was passed.
I think, Mr. Chapman, everybody would like a clarification of what all that really means and what part needs to come to the Board and, and so we'll...
Could we pull this one out?
Let, I think we need to, yeah, let's pull it out and then in a further Board meet. Because remember, it, well, it's for 30 days. Remember, we're just workshopping it. It's noticed for 30 days. So we can go back and revisit a better explanation of this one.
If we have significant revision to a policy during that 30-day period, the 30 days has to start all over again. That's why I'm suggesting that we, this one in particular, this one, we pull out and do this separately.
Sure, okay.
And we can research Mrs. Messenger's point as well about clarifying the all-materials wording.
I had made a note too because that's a broad statement. that's a broad statement. Uh, we just wanna make sure that we understand the intent of the law and we're complying with the law. So, agreed.
Okay, and then, um, policy ninety-eight hundred on the charter schools. Are there changes to the law on when a charter can be revoked or not renewed? Is that the purpose of this?
I may have to lean on legal counsel for that, uh, answer to that question.
Good morning. There were significant changes to statute this particular past session. They removed other good cause, which was, um, the ability for greater discretion that was taken out of the statute. So we're seeing a lot of the changes within this to reflect the current, let me get temperature of, of the legislature in regards to charter.
Okay, number D is material, materially breaches the charter as described in state law. Why would we take that one out?
It would be stricken only because of the statutory changes to one thousand two point three three. This is not discretionary. We didn't pull something out because of the fact we wanted to strike it. This would be to mirror the actual changes in statute.
Okay, alright.
With other good cause shown, it had a lot of enumerated categories as well, and the, and the model contract for charters in this foreman has also been reflecting, reflecting these changes as well.
But this is above, this is above and separate from other good cause shown. Other good cause shown is number F. This is number D. That they materially breached the charter. We can't, we don't, we have no, as described in state law.
I'm going to go ahead and ensure that this was not stricken by mistake, and it'll take me two minutes.
Okay, thank you. And then just a quick one, eighty-four oh seven about the school officers during, during, um, events. Uh, are we doing that? We do, we do that.
Yeah, I mean, uh, uh, for example, the E A awards, we had, uh, a guardian there. You know, it just depends on the, and that's why we've worded it this way, kinda just the principal, uh, law enforcement, chief safety and security, district administration work together to say, you know, is this something that we need extra support at?
But if the state is requiring it now, are they-
Athletic events, things, things like that.
Are they providing funding for that?
I, I don't, uh, don't, don't believe so.
Thank you.
It, it all goes within the safe schools plot, as you saw in our original budget workshop. We far exceed what the state gives for the requirements.
Alright, thank you.
And then just make a point for the public is that we will always make, you know, one of our top priorities, if not our highest priority is the safety and security of all our staff, students, facilities, guests, stakeholders, parents. So we will always make sure that, budget is never in the way of making sure that security is our number one priority. I think we've seen that recently, that we will always make sure that everybody is safe on our, on our campuses.
Thank you.
I just have, just to reiterate what Ms. Foreman said, I thought that the keeping the library book material under the instructional just tends like, it's all of a sudden, we're gonna have committees for that and have that open. Every school's gonna have it open. I mean, if it's still under that, that same thing. So I, I agree with, with what, with what she, that was one of my concerns. And then Ms. Messenger brought up some more, so I really don't have anything else to add.
I have just a couple of questions real quick, please. So going back to ninety-eight hundred there with the charter schools, letter B fails to meet general accepted standards of fiscal mismanagement due to deteriorating financial conditions or financial emergencies. Determined pursuant to forward a statute one thousand two. Is there not, there was something in the statute, maybe Mr. Title, you could help me out here, that said something about if a school is having financial difficulties, we can initiate like a financial recovery plan, a ninety day financial recovery plan or something like that?
Mr. Tatum, that is in statute. And as a matter of fact, there's a procedure for that as well. Two consecutive months, it would be, it, it would trigger something. We would notify the Department of Education and work with that school as well.
How would we determine the difference between, I understand a financial, financial, how would we determine the difference between, okay, we're gonna do a, help you with a financial recovery plan, or no, we're actually gonna terminate your charter due to a deteriorating financial condition?
That would act, I'm gonna answer both questions at once. Ms. Foreman, material violation of law was section number three, and that was expanded. And it did, the, the language itself before it, it's been stricken, is no longer in statute. Um, I'm not seeing it whatsoever. But when it comes to material violation of law, Mr. Tatum, we also talk about being able to be physically sound. So it, but if, if you see the new, the new revised version of this, there's, there's a process, um, in short. There were issues with terminations of charters in a different county. The legislature has tightened up the termination process and what we're seeing with that. But you must be able to meet, there's no fund requirement for any of the charters, but you must be able to meet your bills. And if you're, if you're unable to do so, you're not fit, you're, you're technically a health, safety and welfare risk to your children for food and other things.
So would it kinda be then just our judgment as to whether we allow like a ninety day financial recovery plan, or we think that it's, it's risen to the point of health, safety and welfare of children?
I will say it's a cop, it's for one, the stat, the statute's always gonna be triggered for the process. But you also, as, as the particular board, you have to look beyond the process to see if they can be physically sound, if they can physically recover. Or you're down the rabbit hole to such a large extent, you're never getting out of it.
So it would be a judgment call eventually, maybe?
Mr. Tatum, we have to work hand in hand with the Department of Education. So no decision can be really made here without DOE confirming the documents that have been sent to them. So if there is a recovery plan notice, then they have to provide it not only to us, but also it's sent to the Department of Education. So we can't really make those calls in silo. They approve the charter once an application has been approved by the board, and they're the ones that have to finally, if the board recommends termination, they have to support that for that to happen as well. So we do work hand in hand with them based on what they also tell us, based on their financials, based on the information that has been provided.
Okay, so does DOE has to approve us terminating a charter or not necessarily?
We, we do not, and we have terminated other charters. Uh, we work hand in hand with them because remember, a charter can appeal to the department, so we don't make a trigger call without submitting all the information to them at first. Because if a charter wants to appeal a decision of the board, DOE can reverse it.
Yes, that's true. I guess what I, what I'm thinking to myself is, you know, we get a financial report plan on a charter school, and it shows, wow, the, the fiscal situation of this charter school is really bad. So do we say, how would we?
The first thing we do is give them the opportunity to meet and give, uh, a plan. And, and we have had situations with others. That, that has happened, and then their plan was solvent, and they've continued on.
Or we look at it and go, gee, it's so far down the rabbit hole maybe, isn't it?
There's no way that they can be solvent in ninety days.
But ultimately, I guess what I'm saying is it would be,
Right.
It would be our decision up here to make a judgment either to-
That, that is, that is correct in conjunction with the Department of Education's advice as well.
Okay, great, thank you. And then going back to the, the materials question, we talked to a lot about classrooms recently. I didn't see anything in here about any of these new policies or rules applying to classrooms because my understanding is DOE gave further guidance that things that are in classrooms now have to kind of fall within the approval process of these media specialists. Is that a concern? Do we need to add anything in here about classrooms? Is that a whole separate issue?
It, it is separate, and after the board at the last meeting approved our procedure, we're now in compliance with that state statute. So they have not required us to do more in terms of policy than what was already done, but we all have to be in compliant with those new rules and regulations, and the media specialists verifying those classroom libraries, uh, meet those statutory requirements.
Okay, so just from my-
But since the board approved that procedure, it now matches that, that piece of that requirement of that statute.
So was there a law that came out, and then the DOE interpreted it a certain way and said, okay, now you have to apply, you have to develop a procedure to apply vetting of classroom materials?
That is-
So it was a law followed by interpretation by DOE, which then puts out a rule, for lack of a better term?
That's exactly right. Now, it doesn't mean that next summer, uh, any laws that have been passed within the years, sometimes Neola then will make recommendations of different policies or so forth, but, uh, that has not happened. Right now, we're in compliance with that latest, uh, statutory requirement.
Great, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
I think, Kelly, does she still have a question? Yeah, Ms. Bray, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, going back to the charter. It all talks about financial, uh, status, I guess. But number one, on, on A, in the middle of the paragraph, page one oh two, it says student performance. If there's a charter that is not performing well, but has financial stability, do, I mean, if we have a charter that's coming up for renewal and they have failing grades, I would almost look at that real hard about renewing their charter. What, I mean, that is one thing that I don't see on here about. I know that I've read, uh, statutes on this, and there's like a process. But if that charter is failing and it comes up to us for renewal, I would almost have to look at that real hard before I would, you know, say, okay, this charter's worthy of renewal. They might be financially stable, but their student performance is really poor. So just have a real quick-
Consecutive Fs would trigger an automatic, uh, closure. Uh, and we have closed a charter for that very statute. So two consecutive Fs would trigger that, uh, or the financial issue would-
And even if one F, there's, they go into a-
Yes, that, and, and, and I will tell you, Ms. Bray, we, you're correct, we do have a charter in that situation that is up for renewal, uh, and, uh, the consideration for their continued contract will look very different than those that are academically and financially solvent because, because of those concerns.
Okay, alright, that's, cuz I really wanna look at that one when it does come up. Okay, that's all I had. Thanks.
Yeah.
Mr. Title, so what is the current approval process for charters? Do we approve them locally? Does the state approve them? Is there two options, two roads to go down? I'm somewhat confused based on recent changes in statute.
Well, there was, there was legislation, it just has not taken effect for the, for the state to take the power away from the districts, from the school boards for the approval, which would allow the, the approval process to be done at the Department of Education level. However, there wasn't out to that as well. You had to have a committee, and the appeal process has not truly been decided. However, at this point in time, if that was ever take effect, the districts would be able to, within thirty days, once we get receipt, send up our objections as well. And I think that they have to have an appeal process. The way it presently stands, if we deny an application, there's an appeal. What happens if they approve an application that we don't agree with? And that has been a tremendous amount of controversy within the state. Uh, but at this point in time, it's our local power, and our local power is the school board to approve or deny an application, um, with a good faith basis. Um, generally, it's curriculum, it's finance, and if they don't like it, it goes to a, uh, an appeals committee, which thereafter goes to the, um, Department of Education, state board itself for ratification.
So being an old English teacher, verb tenses matter to me. So you said there was legislation as opposed to there is legislation that didn't take effect or hasn't taken effect? I'm just confused, like, to me, if there's legislation, then it, it takes effect once the governor-
From, from what I thought, I, I don't think they funded it. They passed it.
Right.
They passed it in last legislation, so it's ready to go, but there is no funding for that committee to come together. They don't have money to, to say, you five people are gonna, are going to approve charter schools now, and that's what they're waiting on. I think this legislative process is, can we get funding for that now?
And I, and I think, Mr. Chuck, you raised an excellent point. That's my exact interpretation, was passed, but not funded. However, once it does get funded, there's a process. You have to get a committee, you have to have them trained for the approval. So there's, there's the methodology. Just saying yes, it's there, doesn't necessarily mean it gets enacted immediately.
So once this committee gets funded and put in place, and the training is done, and they're stamped good to go, then will that take away the local school board's ability to approve?
Subject to sending up your objections, and again, my biggest concern as your attorney, is an appeal process. If they approve a charter which we would never have approved, where do we go with that? Right now, by statute, there is no appeal process for a district, and that is quite alarming.
So will, so once the application is given to us, it just goes to the state? I mean, we may see it or something, but it just goes to the state for approval or not approval, or?
We have thirty days to send up our objections to it. So that's a very tight time crunch to read an application. It's probably gonna be four inches thick. So ultimately, it's gonna be a lot of burden within the district to find, to determine. One, if there's any objection, that's not to say there is, and if there is, to be able to specify the objections and bring it up for consideration before that panel. And quite frankly, I'd be up there arguing those if I, if, if they were given the opportunity. This application should not be approved because-
Right now, the, the decision lies with the board.
Right, but if this legislation goes, when this legislation goes into effect, then that will bypass us.
They can, they have two choices. They can still come directly to the board if they choose.
Okay.
Or they can go straight to the state, e- either, either path.
They being the people who are requesting-
Charter, right, candidate.
So they can pick option A or option B?
Option A or option B.
If option B is to the state, then we have an opportunity to provide input to the state, or they can choose option A, in which case they could still appeal our decision at the board to the state.
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, that's clarification. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bray.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Appreciate it. We'll see those again in thirty days. Uh, that brings us up to construction updates, school support centered, Mr. Winaldi. We are back to back, so. Number one.
Good morning, board members, members, good morning, Superintendent. Am I up here? Okay, in, um, the first board meeting in January, we submitted to the board, uh, for the approval of the architects and the construction managers contract in order for us to commence design on the renovation and remodeling of this building. At that time, we were asked to take a look at, um, options of possibly selling this building and what the cost would be associated with building a structure of, of similar size and similar function. So what we've done, first I wanna go through, uh, what the scope is for the renovation and remodeling that is presently in the budget. Uh, we're looking, first of all, as a priority to upgrade all of the mechanical, electrical, fire protection systems, uh, looking at life safety, fire alarms, uh, redoing the roofing system, redoing exterior windows, uh, redoing the soffit system here that's been failing for a couple of years, and then upgrading the finishes internally, everything from carpet to painting to vinyl wall covering and those sort of things. And then after that, uh, the next priority is to look at the remodeling of spaces. Uh, a couple of those spaces we're gonna look closely at is the boardroom, is the way we can, uh, possibly remodel the boardroom, remodel the board offices. And then, uh, on, uh, the I T level, on the third level, some remodeling there as well. So um, that's kind of the way the priorities are, are working through. Um, in addition to the actual construction costs, uh, within the total project budget, we have F, F and E, we've got technology, uh, we've got the building official and those sort of things. So that in total brings us to a total, uh, project budget of sixteen point seven million dollars. Uh, the design status, as I stated right now, we've gone through the selection process, we've identified the architect, and we've identified the construction manager. We've negotiated the first steps in the process. Uh, the architect is actually gonna go through and do a program analysis initially from top to bottom to figure out exactly what our scope is, working with the engineers to identify what the cost is associated, uh, with the upgrading of all the systems that I mentioned. Uh, and the construction manager is gonna provide pre-construction services, which is primarily looking at scheduling, how are we going to phase- is primarily looking at scheduling, how are we going to phase this, as well as taking a look at the overall cost that the architect comes up with. So what we did too is we went out and we did a market analysis, we worked with a real estate professional, they came up with six comps, and they had a range of $74 a square foot to $148 a square foot for the sale of this property. So that gave us somewhere between a value of $10 and $11 million for this parcel as it stands right now in the present market in Bradenton. So then we went in depth and took a look at what would it take to construct a new structure, similar size, similar function to our present facility we have here. And from the standpoint of a municipal administration building, it's really not a Class A, it's really not a Class B, it's kind of right in the middle there in regards to quality of finishes, in regards to public spaces, and in regards to security as well. So this present building is approximately 75,000 square feet, we sit on about two acres. We estimated what the new construction cost would be was around $435 a square foot to build a office building of this nature. And then estimated cost per acre for the site improvements, including parking, and any improvements we needed to do, it would be about $750,000 an acre. In addition to that, we also threw in hur- hurricane hardening, because we want to make sure that this facility is up and active during a name storm event. So we have a new construction budget for just the facility, site work of around $40 million. Additional project costs on top of that are going to be architect, engineers fees, building official testing we need to do, FF and E, as well as technology, which would add about another 5.2 million. So overall, if we were to rebuild this structure on a parcel that we have existing, because we didn't put any new acquisition cost in there, we'd be around $45 million to construct the facility. And that was kind of my charge. Take a look at those two items.
Mr. Tatum, do you have, we'll start with you, any questions, comments?
So if we were to go out and purchase land, it would cost us approximately $750,000 an acre is what you're-
No, that's the improvement. When we ran the scenario, we assumed that we would be using a parcel that we already owned, and that we would go in and put parking, stormwater, retention ponds, and that would be $750,000 an acre for that improvement.
I understand. Okay, so we're actually, this cost here is assuming we're using our own land at this time?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'm doing some math in my head, so I'll, that's all the only question I have for now, but maybe once my math gets done in my head, I'll have another question, so, okay.
Thanks for this. I, I refreshed my memory, I don't, when do we have this as a time, we put it on the agenda, I think for maybe next meeting? I mean-
Yeah, you tabled-
We, we, we said, hey, we're time sensitive, we're going to go back and approve what was originally, you know, brought to us in, in January. Great due diligence, I mean, we, we did what, exactly what we asked you to do. There's no way. I mean, we stick with our building, we renovate, there's no, I mean, this, this doesn't, it was good to look into, but I, I would not be for selling this with a new construction. That's, I mean, $45 million is, is not what we need to be spending on a bill like this. So I'm, so I'm good. Ms. Warman?
I absolutely concur. Thank you for doing this, it was, it is interesting. But, yeah, we've got to put student, students ahead of administration, so let's, let's move on after this one.
Is she on, is she good? Ms. Ms. Bray?
Yeah, I am on. Just on a new construction cost, it said, building cost would be $435 a square foot, and I've looked at other projects that we're going to be discussing, and that replacement cost is $310 a square foot, so I didn't know about that. But when this project first came up, I did ask some questions, and that's why we're reviewing this now. I didn't know how much FFV was going to be in here, and what, what you just described is going to be quite a bit more than I thought. I will say that in this design, and even prior to this design, I would like to see that any board member that would like to have an office in this building on fifth floor should be allowed to have an office. If there's a way, if there's a desire to separate staff from board members, then I'm sure that can be done with a few two-by-fours and some doors. But that would be the one thing that I would advocate for the board members if they so choose. I know this board member has asked about that and was told that I couldn't have an office on the, up there with staff. So I'm just putting that out there now, because that's going to be the expectation going forward for me on this project. So that's about all I have on that.
And we haven't, we haven't even started-
No, we haven't.
-design.
Right, I understand, I understand.
I think we'll-
That's why, that's why I'm mentioning it now.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Messner? You're last this time.
I appreciate you doing your due diligence, and this is an opener to me, and I, I do have, I know that there will be a design phase and all of that will come before us, and so we'll tackle that later, but this boardroom was done within the last five years. Now, the board had no say in how any of it looks. Staff made all those decisions without any debate, but it's been done within the last few years, and so has the lobby and all. I mean, like, there's areas that need some, some love, and, and it's really more building issues than even like looks issues. But to me, the lobby and this room, I don't think are rooms that really need a whole lot of attention personally. I know you saw, I, I know there's a question about offices. I think our offices here are fine, you know, my job is to be in the schools and in the community, not sitting in an office. And I like going to the schools because it makes me remember why I do this job. So I would, I don't, I do think though, that that room makes no sense in there, the office area, but I'm fine with it where it is, it just makes zero sense, like, zero sense. One thing that I would like, and I know, like I said, the design phase is going to come before us, but one thing I would really hope would be considered is instead of having 203 as 203, make it 103, or you know what I mean, put it on the first floor so that we could do workshops there. It would be a, a nice overflow area if we wanted it, and it, we wouldn't have to worry about safety and security of it because it'd be on the first floor. So I don't know, I'm sure you guys are, this is, you're an architect, this is your thing. Like, I, I'm not even, I, I know I'm preaching to a choir, but I would, I just ask for like that kind of consideration because I just want things to make sense. Like, and that, that would make sense if it was down here, somewhere on the first floor, easily accessible, so that we could do workshops, so that committees could be there and it would be, you know, just, those are really my only two pieces on that. And like I said, I know this was extra work, but I really appreciate your time doing it, so, thank you very much.
Did you have anything else?
I do, real quick. So just for you students out there that are watching, I'm actually doing math, I learned my math, learned your math, right here with my pen, plus-ing and minus. So assuming that the cost to rebuild, as you said, is $400, $435 per square foot, and we have to pay $45 million to rebuild the building, and we can sell, let's say we could sell the property for $11 million, that means that we're still out $36 million.
And you already have budgeted 16, so-
16 million, so that would cost us an extra 20 million. I did my math right, look at that, it came out right there. Now-
No calculator either.
No calculator, right? Look at that, okay. So there is a purpose to doing your math, students that are watching out there learning how to do it. So let's, could we address Mrs. Bray's question though? Why, I don't know anything about building square foot cost, she said there are other buildings that, we're building that are not as expensive per square foot maybe as this one. Is there a different rate for building office space as opposed to school space or other buildings that we're doing?
Yeah, we, we interviewed a number of construction managers that are doing office space. It is unique to educational facilities. I mean, because, think about it, if you have a seven, 800 square foot classroom, that would possibly be subdivided up into four or five offices, additional partitioning, additional data drops, those sort of things. So that's why we're seeing costs in the $350,000 range for an educational facility, and we're seeing significant, not significantly higher, but, you know, a, a good 20% to 25% more for an office building.
Okay, you said 350,000, I think you meant three, 350-
$350 dollars a square foot.
Perfect, I just want to make sure. On the record, okay. Okay, well, that ma- that makes sense, and I understand what you're saying. What you're saying is, hey, you've got a classroom, you've got one computer up there for the teacher, you've got one technology drop, you don't have a bunch of partitions. If you're going to have office space within that, you'd have to have partitions, more technology drops, more desks, more whatever that makes sense. Okay, that's good. And then I also too would like a, an office in the building, this is kind of my office right now, and it would be nice to have an office with a, a small conference table that I could have meetings at and a desk where I could sit at and do my office work. That would be helpful, I, I would go along with that definitely. And I think those are the only questions that I had. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. But you're not going anywhere.
I know.
I believe the one that folks are here for is next, construction update, Palmasola Elementary School. And you're up again, Mr. Rinaldi.
She's got me covered here, okay. Good morning, board. We're going to be talking about Palmasola Elementary School, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through the two facility assessments that we've done there, and the estimated operating cost versus what we presently have for operating cost, as well as cost of proposed construction for possibly two different scenarios for this campus. As you know, Palmasola is, is actually a 20structure campus, so a lot of our campuses right now are, are singlestructure facilities, especially at the elementary level. This has actually 20 structures on campus. Number 20 on the right is the PE Pavilion, and there is number 19, which is our central plant to, to the north as well that I did not number. However, you can see the campus is more of an open, what we call a wing campus from a design standpoint. Building number 18, which I've highlighted in green, is the newest facility that we have on campus. It was during our discussions and inspections with DOE, they agreed that that building, or they advised us that that building needs to remain. They did give us authorization to raise or demolish the, all of the existing buildings as well. And building number 18, to keep it in mind, it has 200 student stations in there right now, so it's got, I believe it's 10 classrooms, but 200 student stations in our FISH inventory. The Jacobs report is the first report that I wanted to review. This was done back in 2019, and what Jacobs did is they went through and they evaluated every system on campus, on all the campuses of the district. And they went through and they did a rating of the adequacy of those campuses. And what they developed was what they called a five-year FCI, and that's a facility cost index. And as the percentage grows, the actual campus is in worse condition. And that 35%, it would take the replace, 35% of the replacement cost of that facility to bring and do the renovation up. So as you go up, there's kind of a magic number in the design, when, when you get up over 25, it doesn't make a lot of sense to do renovation and remodeling, because there's just too many upgrades that need to be done. So you move forward with the request of DOE in Florida to demolish and to build new. So as you can see, Palmasola came in as, as the second most needing campus within the district. Now, other elements that we considered, you can see, as you know, we've got Blackburn, we've got Onico, and we've got Hale that are presently under design. In addition to that, we've completed the work on SUG, and we've completed the work on Witt Elementary School too. One of the things that we looked at as we were prioritizing within this group of nine was, were there issues within the region in regards to capacity? Were there environmental issues? For instance, Blackburn, we had some termites that we had to deal with, and those sort of things kind of moved the priorities within that group of nine. And obviously, the SSC was there as well, and that came in as number three that we just talked about. So this was the basis for the Jacobs report. Now, the Jacobs report looked specifically at the condition of the systems within the building. The next step is the Castaldi Report, which we did with DOE, and that's kind of the next level. It's not only looking at the condition of the systems within the facilities, but it's also looking at how that facility functions from a programming standpoint. How is it, you know, related to 21st century instructional delivery and those things? So it also not only evaluates the bricks and mortar, but it also looks at how it functions as well. And we need to go through the Castaldi Report in order to request the permission to demolish any buildings on our campus, and that request goes to DOE, they evaluate it. Now, I would like to say that they look at all the data, but in reality, what they're only looking at right now is the age of the facility. And if the facility is over 30 years of age, then they will approve the demolition. We've had some that we've submitted up there that are 27, 28, and they've told us, you got to wait two or three more years if you want to demolish. So unfortunately, there is a lot of work that's put into the Castaldi. It's good information, especially from the programming standpoint, as well as the facility conditions, but DOE really isn't using that to its fullest extent right now. So when our consultant went through and did the Castaldi, they found that basically from a, the district standards, from our facility standards, as well as our curriculum standards, the campus wasn't, wasn't acceptable at this point right now. Especially with educational efficiency was significantly lacking is what we found in the report. Campus-wide architectural, structural, mechanical, and plumbing systems all needed to be upgraded. What was unique about this campus though, compared to other campuses, is the mechanical systems were upgraded in 2007. And most of our campuses, when we do the renovation remodeling, the major component is that mechanical piece. This one, it had already been upgraded, so the major component with this campus was the roofing system, the building envelope, and the functionality from a program standpoint, as well as security with it being a multi-building campus as well. So DOE agreed with us that all the buildings that were 61 to 32 years of age, which was all of the buildings with the exception of building 18, should be demolished or could be demolished if we elected to do that. But they also said that we needed to modernize, renovate, and remodel building 18. So that was the DOE. From an operation standpoint, we did evaluate from a cost per student, the operations, as you can see, electric and natural gas, it's a smaller campus, so therefore, it's, it's a little more expensive when, when, when you look at the cost per student station, or cost per student enrollment-wise. What we would anticipate, if, I'm going to present two scenarios. If we stay with the same-sized campus, we would probably see immediately a 10% reduction in the utility cost just because we're more efficient, bringing in more efficient systems and all that. If we were to go to the smaller-sized campus, which is 500 student stations I'm going to show, we could see probably a 20 to 25% reduction, so you would see a reduction associated with that. On the food service, that doesn't impact operational, that's all federal money, and it's been kind of crazy because it's been free meals over the past year, so as we transition, those numbers are going to become a little more valid than what, what we're presenting here right now. So, 750- So, seven hundred and fifty student stations, that is the existing size of the campus today. Um, we would replace with new construction, all the buildings that are thirty-two, sixty-one years old. Um, we estimated square footage is a little bit over eighty thousand square feet. So if building eighteen has two hundred, then we're adding five hundred and fifty new classroom, or five hundred and fifty new student stations to the, under the new construction. So you can see two hundred will be renovated and remodeled. So we estimate that at three fifty a square foot, um, we would look at new construction around twenty-eight million. The renovation and remodeling of that two hundred student station building is about twelve thousand square feet, a little over twelve thousand, would be two point four. And then all the other things like architects, engineers, FFNA, building official, would be another one point three. So in order to build the same campus we have there today, we would estimate would be thirty-one point nine million. Now, what we have in the present budget is twenty-two million based on, uh, the estimate that was done in two thousand and nineteen using the Jacobs report. And we have that out in year twenty-seven, twenty-eight is the way it stands right now. So that's if we replace like for like. So the smaller campus. So if we go to a smaller campus, um, we would be adding three hundred student stations that which would probably be approximately between seventeen and twenty new classrooms here. About forty-six thousand square feet, you can see it's close to half the size of doing the, the full seven fifty. It'd be about sixteen point one million for the hard brick and mortar and doing the site work. Uh, the modernization of building eighteen would be at two point four million, which is the same cost previously. Um, and then we've got the additional costs that are about a million dollars. So we are estimating at this time that a five hundred student station campus would come in around nineteen point five million dollars. So you can see the difference between like versus actually bringing the campus down. Uh, one of the reasons we're looking at that is right now, population-wise, they're a little bit under four hundred and fifty students. They're running probably between fifty-five and sixty percent capacity. So we felt that a five hundred student station, you'd be able to accommodate the present enrollment that you have today. And this is the campus, and I'm, I'm prepared to answer any questions that you have.
Um, let's, I want to ask the board, your privy, do you want to discuss now? Do you want to then do public comment? Would you like to hear public comment, then discuss options, what, what, what does the board feel?
I'd like to ask questions of Mr. Rinaldi about what he just presented, and then go straight to public comments rather than.
And then come back, maybe us?
Yeah, and discuss it after.
So just ask specific questions about the project, and then we can talk about everything, perfect. So why don't we start off with you then?
Oh, great, okay. Um, if you build a smaller campus, and we have a population increase later, okay, um, there are cycles in neighborhoods, there's, uh, Lake Flores is coming in, you know, would we be able to, would we anticipate adding to it if needed?
We, we would develop it similar like we did with Parish High School. Um, make sure that we've got utilities running to that location and identify an area where we could add another, another building similar to building eighteen, that would be an additional two hundred student stations, so you'd be back up to that seven fifty. Now, in the numbers I worked, I did stay with, with the smaller core spaces. We always talk about, you know, building the core for seven fifty, but, um, but, you know, having only five hundred student stations. So, so this, in order to, to be economical, uh, we would have to look at ways to expand some of the core spaces as well. But going in knowing we had to do that, we, we could easily look at ways to expand dining, ways to expand the media, and ways to add a couple of additional offices on the admin, it's not a major input.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about cafeteria size, so we would be building and designing a cafeteria for five hundred students as opposed to the possibility of seven hundred.
But, but we, we would, we would make sure that it was fully expandable.
Okay, alright. Uh, let's see here. That's all I have.
Ms. Bray, you're up. I believe you may be muted.
Alright, there we go, can you hear me?
Absolutely, thank you.
Alright, um, looking at your facility report from the two thousand and nineteen Jacobs report on your, on your presentation, it has Palmasola at a five-year score at thirty-four point five, with a pending twenty-two million two hundred. And then down at the bottom of that bracket, we have Braden River, which was at thirty point seven, which is completed, at twenty-six million. So we did Braden River at a lower score with a higher budget. And we waited to do Palmasola with a higher score and a lower budget. So that, that's one thing I wanted to point out. Um, the second thing is from a remodel to a redo on the same graph, and if I did the math, Mr. Tate, from the twenty-two hundred to the thirty-one nine, it'd be approximately nine or twelve million, um, eight hundred and eighty, I'm guessing, eight hundred thousand dollars to, to do new. Um, I know this, I've toured this facility, I've looked at the Jacobs report, the Castaldi formulas, um, some of the things that they're pointing out in there from, uh, you know, the issues, a missing tile, water cooler, this, that, you know, the roofing system. When I toured it, the first thing I did was look up at the ceiling to see if I saw any major leaks. They even coded in the book that the ventilation in the, uh, office that you walk into, I'm guessing that's building eighteen it might be, that it's outdated, however, Braden River, they painted it red and made it look beautiful. So that was a note, uh, of concern that, okay, we're gonna point it out as a bad thing in one, but we're gonna paint it at another school and make it look great, which, which I think was awesome, it's industrial, it gives that history. I just think it's a, a beautiful campus. And to even consider, uh, closing this school, in my opinion, would be a detriment to that community, given the fact that there are several building developments going on out there. Um, I strongly am opposed to, uh, closing the school. I would totally support a rebuild or a remodel. Um, of those, that student body out there, which is I think around four hundred and fifty students, as you said, um, talking to the principal there, only about a dozen students are bused in. The rest are brought in by students, or by parents, or family members, or whatever, and the rest actually walk. Uh, to destroy that community relationship out there is, uh, something that I would not support. I, I, I think that shows that there's significant investment on that community to the school. And after touring it, I just felt, you could feel it, that these students really take pride in that, in that campus, and so do the staff. And when a storm came through, it was the parents and the community that came and cleared it up. Um, so that's my, uh, my brief summary of what I think of this school. I think it's a great little campus, and I've toured other campuses. And if it were me, that would be of, so, four campuses I toured, that would be the best one as far as, um, uh, the functionality. There's few issues that I could see that, yeah, we need to fix this and that, but concrete doesn't rot. I've said that to many people, um, and I'm saying it here publicly. I just think that disrupting a school that according to GreatGrades.com is an above average in test score, student progress, and quality, uh, eight out of ten. So I, I would sacrifice the support center renovation to support this school because that's what we're here for, we're here for the students. And I understand our support center needs, uh, attention as well. But we all say it's all about the students, and that's where I'm standing, it's all about the students. I'd rather have the students have a great facility than, than, uh, and that's not to discredit the support staff. Uh, we all say it's about students, about students, well, in this case, it truly is about the students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let it go. Uh, Ms. Messenger, I mean, we're, we're just sticking to questions on the construction piece.
That was my understanding, is we are.
Not, not necessarily.
Questions right now, not having discussions.
Right.
I don't have any questions.
On the project, perfect. Mr. Tatum?
I do have some questions. So for, so I can be more educated on how these type of things work. On the five-year FCI score, what does that percentage actually represent, thirty-five point nine, thirty-five point, thirty-four point five?
In, in the next five years, we would have to put thirty-nine percent of the replacement cost of the facility in order to keep it up and operational. So if we identify, they identified the replacement cost at twenty-two million dollars. So for the next five years, we would put thirty-nine percent of that twenty-two million dollars into just maintaining and keeping it at its present status quo, as opposed to upgrading it. So that's why if you're repeatedly putting money into, you know, fixing air handlers, repairing plumbing, think, you know, you're, rather than refreshing the entire campus, that, that's why, when that number creeps up on you, it, it, at some point, it doesn't make sense to continue to do that and, and you demolish.
Okay, so you said thirty-nine, but is it thirty-four point five?
Uh, let's see.
Make sure I'm looking at the right number.
No, you're, yeah, they're thirty-four point five.
Okay, so if the number were a hundred percent, in theory, what that would mean is that.
Over the next five years.
You'd have to replace everything. And so what this number is saying is about a third of the infrastructure of the building needs to be replaced over the, and so you're looking at that, and you say, okay, I take a third of twenty-two thousand, roughly, that's seven million, and that's what, just, just to maintain it over the next five years, it would cost us around seven or eight million dollars, is that?
Right, but, but, but keep in mind, the, the typical life cycle of, of a new building is, you know, twenty-five plus years. So if you repeatedly, five years, five years, spend thirty percent, thirty, I mean, at some point, it just makes sense to, to build a new so that we can, can get new systems in there.
Okay, and this, the Jacobs report was done in two thousand and nineteen, and the budget, these budget numbers over on the right, is that two thousand and nineteen cost estimates?
Those are their twenty-nine, those are the factors that they used in their report. Now, what we've done this year is we've gone back to Jacobs, and we've spent about the last month with them to update the cost per square foot to reflect two thousand and twenty-two. And then, as you can, as I stated, there are a number of buildings here that were already under construction, or we've completed. So we're working for the next set of ten priorities or nine priorities. So I, I will, hopefully, we'll have that to you when we go into the capital budget discussions. So we're looking to update that right now.
Okay, and Ms. Bray asked the question about, and I'm curious too, just to begin, so I understand how these things work, and maybe the public can understand too. Braden River, which had a lower Jacobs report score, was done at a higher budget first. What, how do we make those decisions?
Some of the soft issues, down, down in the bottom there, I talk about critical issues that, that we were considering. Capacity issues were, were one of the big things, if we had way too many portables out there, and we needed to get back to permanent construction. Um, regional growth, if we knew we had developments that were getting ready to happen, and would be impacting us, then it, it kind of gave some of the, the, the soft higher rating there. Environmental issues, as I said, we're working with termites on one, and then we're working with the cops funding as well, uh, over the past year. And also the traffic issues, I mean, some, some campuses have significant traffic issues as a result of the inability to queue vehicles on the campus. So that, that's some of the items that, you know, within that group of nine, we were moving them around to try to address those soft issues, as well as the hard facilities issues that was being reported by the Jacobs report.
So just because the number is lower, we don't just go by the numbers, so to speak. There are judgment factors that we hire you to make these kind of judgment calls, and at least bring them to our attention, so. Okay, so it's not just a numbers-based decision at that point, okay. So talked about that, and then what does the, we, I forgot what the number means. I'm just curious too, why is the, if you go over to the operations page, where you talk about utilities and things like that? Just the natural gas number, I'm just curious, why is that so extraordinarily seventy percent higher than? What you're telling us here is, it's seventy percent higher than the average, if you took all the average of the other schools, this.
Right.
Why is that so, so high at that school?
Because a lot of, some, some of our schools don't have natural gas, so they're at zero. So it, it kind of skews that number a, a little bit. It may, it may have been more appropriate to look at those campuses that had natural gas and water heaters and, and those sort of things, but we were just doing a generalization here. But, I mean, the big thing that we want to watch is if we do either one of the scenarios, we, we want to track, you know, did we realize a, a gain through the efficiencies by the new systems we put in? So that, that's one of the metrics we track, and the state tracks as well for us.
Okay, so now if we go over to the construction cost budget to keep the school as it is, did I hear you say that in building eighteen, there are approximately two hundred and fifty stations?
Two hundred student stations.
Two hundred student stations, and that, then we would need to rebuild five hundred and fifty stations to keep it at the, okay? And then if we go to the, reduce the overall size, that means, so we have the two hundred, so we want to make it five hundred. See, that math is coming in handy again.
Yep, three hundred.
We need to rebuild three hundred stations, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, great. So three hundred new stations. And then you did say that you believe there is enough space on that property to expand if we have developments that are, that happen around it, or the, the change over and the demographics happens, and there are more schoolchildren that move in?
From, from that standpoint too, but the other piece that we look at is how are we, if we do a replacement like, like we did at SUG, do we have adequate property to do possibly temporary portables? Or, you know, build one, and there, there's adequate space there where we can work around that campus uh, in, in order to make sure that even while construction is going on, that, um, you know, fully adequate and appropriate instruction will be delivered at that time as well.
Great. And did I hear you say that we, we try and build the infrastructure initially such that if we were needing to expand the campus, that that stuff is kind of already in place?
Yep.
Did I hear you say that?
Yes, I mean, yeah, so we'll, we'll, like, at Parish, we identified where the location of the future building was, and we stubbed out plumbing, we stubbed out sanitary sewer, had electric coming, so, yeah, so those sort of infrastructure items would be prepped.
Good, that's very good.
If we expand.
Forward-thinking, that's good, I like to see that, so, okay. And then the last question I have is, what information do we have about any building developments that are going in around there? When I say building, I mean housing developments, do, do we have any information about?
I've got my executive planner, Mike, Mike Pendley, who's been, been tracking that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, there is actually quite a bit of growth in southwest Manti County, but it's not within Palmasola District. Most of that is in Seabreeze District, and I think, uh, Ms. Foreman mentioned Lake Flores. A lot of the growth is in that area, it's Aqua by the Bay, Lombard Point, those are really the same, same developments, it's all right there together. And there's some smaller ones in the area, but again, those all right now are districted to, to Seabreeze. The only developments that are unbuilt within the Palmasola property are four townhouse units at Hidden Lakes, and twelve single-family units at Palmasola Grand. So a total of sixteen units that we could find that have some type of approval that are not built yet. Uh, and there's just not other vacant land there. So I think from a development standpoint, you're not going, you know, in, unless there was redistricting, you're not going to see a lot of growth in that district. I think the more likely scenario is that there's some turnover in the, uh, the, the housing stock out there, and you get more families back into that area. So that's why we would look to oversize the core facilities to accommodate any future growth.
You know, off the top of your head, I mean, what has the annual, um, population of that school been? You know, is it slowly decreasing, it's slowly, I mean, it's, it's just going down a little bit every year, so.
It's decreasing, I, I can't tell you how, how much annually, um, actually, I could if I were in my office. But, uh, right now, there's four hundred and thirteen students there as of January the eighteenth.
Four hundred and thirteen students?
Yes.
Okay, great. Saunders, can you recall off the top of your head, has it just been counted? Okay, great. Saunders, can you recall off the top of your head? Has it just been kind of going down a little bit or?
Yes, one of the things that was done a number of years ago as well is we did redistrict. We were, it was part of our transportation solutions. This was back when Dr. Hope's was on the board. We had for a long span of time been busing students from Palmetto to that area, to Stewart, to Palm Sola, to Miller. So we did do some redistricting so that it was more a neighborhood school. So that did have an impact in those areas. And but since then, because it's an older neighborhood and there's no new growth, you have seen a decline. The actual zone students that attend there are two-hundred-and-thirty-nine.
Okay.
So the rest of the population is made up by children and parents choosing to have their students attend that school.
Okay. Did I hear someone say that only twelve students are actually bused to Palm Sola? Did I?
You'll know how many students.
My my transportation director said that it was actually six. So it's a, yeah, and we we are not, there's very little transportation impact.
And a lot of that was derived to some solutions when we saw that we were having transportation issues in years past that, you know, we did that because we were transporting students from large, large distances throughout the county to that school. So it 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 has declined, but it's because it's an older neighborhood. But as you will see, even though the zone is smaller, parents are choosing in many cases to have their children attend that school, and that's why the number is where it is.
Almost a third, apparently, from, you said two-hundred-and-thirty-nine are in the district, and then we have four-hundred-and-thirteen, so again, that math.
We have a couple of pre-K offer classrooms there as well, which, yes, parents are choosing to put their children there for pre-K.
How many pre-K classrooms?
Two classrooms.
Just for my information, and does that number, is the four-hundred-and-thirteen, does that count the pre-K students or?
Yeah, the total population of the school includes pre-K.
Includes pre-K. Okay, great. Let me look at my list real quick. Those are all the questions that I have. Thank you.
Thanks. The only thing I have is as far as renovation goes, I mean, obviously, the DOE came in and said those thirty-two, the the ones that are thirty-two to sixty-one years old, do we have to follow what the DOE says is my is my question first?
No, I mean, if they have given us permission to demolish, if we go on campus, start working with the design, working with the community and all that, and we decide there's one or two buildings that we would rather renovate than demolish, then that would reduce the new square footage that we're constructing, and we would just go into a renovation remodeling mode with that as well.
But essentially, over the five, you're doing that in clusters, so it's the same, doesn't matter. Real quick, you don't have to get into detail of like which buildings and things like that, like you would start, because that, we're obviously not even close to that. But if you were going to do, if we were going to choose which either one, how would you go about impacting the school as we were doing construction? So I don't think it's big enough, it's like what we did at SUG to where we can build off, you know, to the right, I'm looking at the map, like off to where the the playground and the basketball courts. I don't think it's big enough where we can put the new school there.
The the natural.
So how would, how would you essentially do that?
The the natural is buildings five, six, eight, and nine, that you you would look to demolish those, you would look to displace those classrooms. I mean, and first thing is going to be an assessment. If you've got a seven-hundred-and-fifty-student station elementary here, and there there's only, you know, a little less than four-fifty, there may be some vacant classrooms, and we would bring portables in, but possibly right in that core area, maybe you would put a single-story or a two-story and, you know, work, figure out what works best there. And then then the next phase, and so and then that would kind of be your swing space too. So once that's constructed, you could move classrooms one, two, eleven, twelve, you know, you'd be able to move the classroom, those students into that new building, do the demolition there and start building the core building for for that as well. And then, you know, probably building eighteen, that is, probably has a magnitude that we could do it over summer as well. So that would be a swing space for us as well. So, I mean, so we we would look to just like what we're doing with, we haven't formally presented to you Blackburn and Terra, but I mean, that's the type of thing we're working on right now is we're bringing portables in, we're taking a wing down at a time, we're using those portables as swing spaces. And then, you know, during the year, you know, mid-year, one group of students may move out to the portable, we renovate their space, another move in. So that's the type of flow and, you know, the use of those swing spaces, the way we do it.
What's the ti, so what's the timeframe from doing that process to just tearing it down and rebuilding all at once? Like, is it, will it take a longer process to do that?
Yeah, I mean, it 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 will take a longer process and we need, because we we need to hit times that we can move students, which is typically Thanksgiving, winter break, spring break, where we can be moving. So, yeah, it it typically takes a little longer to do that, but versus if you demolish it, build it, then you've got to bring portables in, and you get into those soft costs. You're, you know, you're you're bringing probably upwards of twenty to twenty-five portables in there. And, I mean, that that's an expense as well. So we won't be doing that.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure if we got any questions, we'll we'll come back to you.
I have one question.
One more?
That came up.
Yep.
Guys were talking. How many acres is this site?
Ooh.
Do you know?
Seventeen.
Seventeen plus. Okay. Sixteen to twenty-two. I was just curious how that compared to other sites that we have.
Thanks.
We try to have about twenties are preferable for, yeah.
I was just curious. It's okay.
I mean.
Okay, we'll just round out. That's fine.
Was that your question?
That was, I just wanted to know how it compared to the other.
Other sites, okay.
Thank you.
Ma'am, one more question. It states that on consultant findings, educational efficiency is significantly lacking due to the physical conditions. What do they mean by that?
Well, they evaluate some, the instructional methodologies and, you know, as things, as it has evolved, does that classroom space work for the way that instruction is being delivered? And, you know, they're doing comparisons to brand-new schools that are coming, you know, that that have a lot of unique spaces, and with the with the thought that will be, you know, up, you really want that technology, you want the flexibility within the classroom, and and those those sort of things. So that's more on the program side.
All right, we'll go ahead and get into, thank you, Mr. Rinaldi, get into public comment, and then board, we can discuss more after. I do want to just let everybody know, I I understand this is a very emotional topic. There's going to be people that come up and speak that you a hundred percent agree with, and you want to cheer and root them on. I ask for just proper decorum. This is, this is a a business workshop. And if we all want to get together after and cheer outside, you can cheer for everybody. But I just ask that, as just so efficiency, we can move on with every every speaker and go on. I'll call a couple of names at a time just so you know where you stand, so you can get ready to come up to the podium. So we'll start off with Commissioner Kevin Van Austin Bridge, and then followed by Peggy Gardner and Jeremy Anderson. And for those who've never public commented here before, above is is your time of three minutes, and welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, honorable members of the board, and Madam Superintendent. I've come up here because this is, obviously, it's in the middle of my district. There's been a lot of outcry from residents and taxpayers. And I I saw the SAC meeting, I saw some videos, I spoke to folks who were there. And I know that there was a lot of passion at the SAC meeting, and there was a lot of emotion. And that has a place in the process, and I think it's important that everyone knows how passionate the residents are and the parents of the students at the school are. However, you know, I I sit in your seat occasionally, and I know that we have to have, we have to have facts if we're going to govern. We don't just govern the twenty or thirty people there sort of shouting at us in a room. We have to govern with the tax dollars of four-hundred-and-twenty thousand residents of the county. So I've come this morning to attempt to to hopefully set a little bit of a tone this morning for decorum and provide some guidance for for those that are here to speak to you so that we can ultimately achieve the goal that we want, which is to save Palm Sola Elementary. Sir, I hope that you'll extend my time a little bit since I am up here representing eighty-three thousand people in my district. So, first of all, we should not be upset with our superintendent. Her job is to find ways to save money. And if she thinks she's found a way to save twenty-two million dollars, we always want her to bring that to you. We never want to discourage her from doing something like that. But of course, it's it's up to the board ultimately to set the policy and to make those decisions whether or not it's the right thing to do. Because you do govern over a school district and and tens of thousands of little lives, and it's not just pure pragmatism, is it? There's a lot more that comes into this. This is a true neighborhood school, as we've heard. You have issues with busing, right? Finding drivers is a is a labor issue that we're all facing. We face it with MCAT, you're facing it here. And the good news is that at Palm Sola, your, all of your busing needs can be met with a minivan. There are six children currently that need transportation to Palm Sola. So that's a huge benefit to the school district. Neighborhoods are cyclical. This is the issue that we're facing. Student populations, they increase and then they drop again. It's a natural cycle of neighborhoods. And right now, yes, West Bradenton is suffering a migration of families out to Parish and out to Lakewood Ranch as well. I don't necessarily think, though, that that closing, probably the shining star of schools in West Bradenton is going to help that migration. I think it's likely to, in the short term, to exacerbate the migration to those schools in Parish and the families moving out east to newer construction. And in the long term, Mrs. Foreman is correct, Lake Flores at Seventy-Fifth Street and Cortez Road, that farm has sold. And they have entitlements and approvals for six thousand residences on that farmland, plus over a million square feet of commercial space. And that's coming. There is not a school site allocated within those site plans or those designs. And so in the long term, as families come back to West Bradenton and as it starts to build out, what what sort of a bind will the district be in, is my question? Because obviously, there are no other twenty acre parcels.
I'll extend your time as long as you.
Thank you, sir.
Maybe do that to me if I come before the board.
Absolutely. I would, I would always grant you that professional courtesy.
Reported, right?
Yes, this is on the record. But guys, my question is, where are we going to find another twenty acres in West Bradenton if we do decide to close this school today? Or whenever you do cast your vote. And I've heard the the chair, I've spoken to to most of you at this point, one-on-one. And I've heard the chair publicly say, so there's no issue of, well, it's a publicly held meeting, I can state it anyway, that you have no intentions of selling Palm Sola, of selling the site, even if the school were to close. But the truth is, with inflation, the inflationary, you know, status that we're sitting in now, money is at a premium. I don't think anyone ever thought the school district would sell the Police Athletic League site, but it's a prime piece of real estate. And it's hard to pass up those dollars when the land is just sitting there. And a vacant piece of property is a liability, whether it's the liability of having to mow and maintain it or your first trip and fall lawsuit. Eventually, it's going to become a liability, and eventually, the board at some point is going to say, you know, Mr. Neal or Mr. Baruff is willing to pay us X amount of dollars for this property, and I don't see us doing anything with it anytime soon, and it's likely to be sold in the end. I'm not saying that you're you're up here telling us you're going to do something that you won't by any means, but times change and things change, and I I fear that that property would ultimately end up being sold. And then we're going to end up in a in a tough spot further down the road when student populations fluctuate, and we need another school. Now, there is the issue you're facing of growing pains in Manatee County. Obviously, in Parish, schools are are maxed out in a capacity. The same with Lakewood Ranch. And we sympathize with the capacity burdens that you're suffering out there. West Bradenton, if you look at the Supervisor of Elections website, you can see that West Bradenton supported the half-cent sales tax tax. West Bradenton supported the additional millage that the school board asked for both times. We do support our school district, and we support our school system, and we show it with our votes and with our checkbooks. And we'll continue to support your schools in building your more schools out there to reduce your capacity. But, Mr. Chair, I don't think that closing a school in West Bradenton to put the rest of the schools in West Bradenton at capacity is the solution. I don't think that all schools at capacity is the standard that the district is looking to achieve. And so I would just ask you to please not essentially try to lower the the capacities issues you're having out east and in Parish at the expense of the students in West Bradenton. I know that you're up here not receiving a lot of pay, and that it's sort of a thankless job. I I feel your pain there. We thank you for your service to our children and to our community. I know all of you, and I know that you're faced with difficult decisions each week. I know that you pray before you make these decisions and you seek his guidance, and for that reason, we respect whatever decision that you make. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peggy Gardner? Followed by Jeremy Anderson and Christina Snyderman.
My name's Peggy Gardner. I think that Mr. Van Austin Bridge did an excellent job of promoting and did good research in giving you a lot of detail. I'm here just to encourage you to be very reasonable about your decision about Palm Sola. I think that their staff and their faculty have been exceptional. My grandchildren go there, and they are, they, right now, my one grandchild is a little bit upset about everything that's going on. There's rumors floating around, and this is really causing her a little grief. She's only eight years old. So my concern is that we will close this and sell it off to someone, and like Mr. Van Austin Bridge said, we're going to probably see a regrowth in that area. And then we're not going to have a school. This school has been around a long time. They have exceptional faculty. They've shown that right now, their choice, people are choo choosing to take their students there, even though they have to take them, excuse me, take them there every morning, pick them up every night, make all those sacrifices, which I'm willing to do for my kids so that they can have their kids at a good school. And I will stop. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service to the district, Ms. Gardner, for so many years. Jeremy Anderson, Christina Snyderman, and Holly Woolard.
Good morning. My name is Jeremy Anderson. I'm a Palm Sola parent. Other parents and community members are going to talk to you about the generations of families that have attended Palm Sola and the traditions involved with the school, and what a wonderful place it is. And I agree with that, all of that, a hundred percent. I wouldn't be here in front of you if I didn't. But I want to talk about the brass tacks of the issue. What if this was your kid's school? Chairman Cho, Ms. Messenger, I know you guys grew up here in West Bradenton. You went to Manatee High School. Once upon a time, you knew what it was like, what this side of the county was meant. These kids deserve better than to have, than to hear these rumors of their school closing. These teachers and staff deserve better than weeks of sleepless nights. When you're growing up here or in the places in which the other board members grew up, could you imagine being faced with the possibility that people your parents elected were pondering taking your school away so they could be sold to developers? I know that's not necessarily what's going to happen, but, you know, like others have said, maybe it will. And this just doesn't affect just these children and their teachers and their support staff and families. What about the families at Stewart Elementary, at Anna Maria Elementary, at Seabreeze, and Moody, and Miller? The children from Palm Sola have to go somewhere. Almost five hundred kids increasing class sizes and reducing the quality of educational experience for all the schools. It'll change staff levels in the schools, it'll change traffic school, traffic flow around these schools, it'll be a butterfly effect. The most frustrating aspect of these public comment sections is the fact that they're just that, comments. There's no back and forth, no debate, no ability for us as community members to hold any of you accountable in this moment. But we can and we will hold you accountable in the one way we can. But we can and we will hold you accountable in the one way we can, at the ballot box. Some of you guys are up for reelection next year. I I don't think that closing a school in an election year is is a good idea for you. It's not just, it's Palmasola's families that feel this way. I think the residents of the of the area, they don't want condos and housing developments going up in the middle of their neighborhood. This is, this is old. This is West Bradenton, you know? I I don't think that anybody wants that. I thank our county commissioner for being here. I I I know that he realizes what's at stake and and is going to bad for his constituents. You know, we elected you guys to listen to the community, to make decisions based on what's best for the community, and I hope you'll do that. You know, you have options in front of you to save the school, to rebuild, options that are already in the budget. Please do the right thing, the right thing for our children, for our teachers, for our staff, rebuild the school. I just, as a end note, you know, I just wanted to say that despite.
Thank you. Christina Snyderman. Holly Woolard. Is next, and Jennifer Hubbard.
All right. Good morning, all. My name's Christina Snyderman, and I am a proud Palmasola Panther parent. Our son Ryder is in third grade, and our daughter Quinn is actually gonna be starting this this fall at Palmasola. I come to you this morning as not only a parent, but as a Manatee County native. Matter of fact, I went to high school with a few of you on the board, and also a homeowner that lives directly across the street from Palmasola. I had the honor of starting a petition to raise support for Palmasola Elementary. As a matter of fact, I've given you all the comments today that were made by the signers of this petition. I ask that you read those carefully. Today, I'm proud to share with you that almost forty-five hundred people have signed that petition. I'm also proud to share with you that ninety-five percent of those signatures are Manatee County residents from all over this county, east to west. The rumors we've heard to date from the voice of one, but today you'll hear the voice of many. Although not everyone can be here today, this community, through their forty-five hundred signatures, has voiced their opinion on the future of our school to this board. I'd also like to remind the board today, as you consider all the options presented to you, that many statements and promises were made to the parents and community members in attendance at our January SAC meeting. Ms. Saunders was very clear. Students will be at Palmasola in the fall. The decision you're making today has nothing to do with enrollment numbers. Palmasola has always been on the five-year plan, and as a result of that five-year plan, funds are allocated for the construction of Palmasola. And finally, the financial health of this district is very strong. Today's agenda focuses on two main items, Palmasola and the School Support Center. We've all heard your opinion on the Support Center, and we truly appreciate that. My notes have changed thanks to that, so I appreciate that. But unfortunate circumstances and speculation have led us to where things are today. However, those circumstances have brought a community together, and but for the statements that were made over the last few months, this board may never have truly heard the community and may have never seen Palmasola for the gem that it truly is. So I personally consider this a blessing. And although the circumstances are unconventional, I do implore implore this board to think outside the box today. We don't need the board to decide what Palmasola will look like five years from now today. But we, as parents, would like to know that Palmasola, although not not likely the same buildings, will be here for years to come. So given the circumstances, I believe it is important that this board come to a consensus consensus on the general future of Palmasola. Is there a future for our school? And can you focus on that big picture today? So that this board can collectively decide at our next meeting. We're hopeful that that consensus will be that the Palmasola tradition will be continued. And with that, we are looking forward to a fruitful and collective discussion concerning a vibrant and thriving school. And today, we do look forward to transparency and a final resolution dispelling the rumors that we've heard for the last few months. Thank you, all. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Holly Woolard. Jennifer Hubbard's next, and Catherine Smith.
Heather Sweetie. Hi, my name is Holly Woolard. I have a son in third grade and one that will start kindergarten in the fall. We school choice in from the Miller District. My husband and I both attended Palmasola as kids. We have such fond memories as children, that when it was time for our kids to enter the school system, we knew it had to be Palmasola. Palmasola is family. My neighbor now was the school nurse when I attended Palmasola, and she was still there when my child started. My fifth-grade teacher was my son's kindergarten teacher. That's the kind of community and school this is. We aren't a transient town. We are a close-knit community. Safety is always a concern these days, but I see feel safe with my kids tucked away in this community. They aren't on a main road. You don't have to hire an off-duty patrol to get cars out of the parking lot. Kids can walk and ride their bikes with no main road in sight. This rumor has caused angst and anxiety in the parents, teachers, administration, community, and worst of all, our kids. At the SAC meeting, there were kids in Panther Care on the playground. They saw the camera crews, and unprompted, they started chanting, "Save our school! Save our school!" Children shouldn't have to worry about their school being taken away. I read up, I read up on most of you, and you all say some really good things on election years. You wanna help parents be heard, community transparency? Let's walk the walk now. The parents, teachers, kids, and community are telling you, this is not what we want. Whatever it may be, this is what we elected you to do. Closing the school is the easy option. We didn't elect you to do that. We elected you to act in the best interest of this community. Closing the school would have detrimental impact to our community. It would eliminate jobs, class sizes would be larger, teachers that are already underpaid having to take on more kids in their classes. This will result in one less, less one-on-one time with our kids who are already struggling. An NPC study found kids struggle academically, socially, and emotionally after their schools are closed. There are, these are the COVID generations, where we are now admitting we failed them by shutting down the schools. These generations deserve smaller class sizes more than any other generations. Invest in these kids and our community. We all love saving a few bucks, but at what price are you willing to pay? Your own values? I know in the end, the school board will do what's right. And I do appreciate Ms. Sprays' thoughts on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Hubbard. Catherine Smith is following her, and Abby Van Austinbridge.
Hello. I come to you not only as an alumni, but I have a second grader, a kindergartner, and my husband is a teacher there. So I have lots of deep roots with Palmasola. I would, first of all, like to thank the board members and Superintendent Saunders that were in attendance at the SAC meeting last month. I hope that you were able to see the passion and dedication our community has for this school, especially when it's not during work hours. While I wasn't, or, excuse me, while I could go on and on about how wonderful the school is, the deep traditions it has, and its importance to its community it serves, I think it more prudent to focus on what will likely be decision points the U.S. Board members will take into consideration. First is student achievement. This is a thriving school when it comes to student education, with the school consistently earning A B scores and achievement scores ranking ten to fifteen percent or more higher than district scores for both math and E L A. Closing the school jeopardizes these students' ability to excel. As Ms. Woolard said, school closures, in studies have proven, to cause students to struggle academically, socially, and emotionally. It will remain to be seen how the unnecessary stress and concern from the rumors of the closing will impact test scores this year. I feel it would be very short-sighted of you to even consider closing it and reducing capacity for the entire west side of Bradenton. As Commissioner Van Austinbridge said, not only are over six thousand residences planned to be built less than five miles south of the school over the next five years, but neighborhoods are cyclical, as we've also stated before. And despite a downtrend over the last few years that also factors COVID into it, northwest Bradenton could easily return to the abundant levels of the eighties and nineties that we've seen previously throughout the next decade. When looking specifically at Palmasola's numbers, they were near a steady state for years prior to the redistricting that occurred, with five hundred and seventy-five to six hundred students throughout that time. With the redistricting, not only, while no other school in the area exceeded a ten percent loss, Palmasola lost twenty-three point two percent of its students, dropping us to around four hundred and fifty at that time, which seems like a deliberate choice, given this occurred after the twenty nineteen Jacobs Report came out. It's also an interesting choice that the school with the second worst FCI rating on the Jacobs Report is the last to be considered for improvement. And finally, with one of the options discussed here today being well within the budget listed on the Jacobs Report that doesn't account inflation, which would be twenty-six million at this point, why has there even been a hint of the possibility of the school closing permanently? No other rebuild or renovation on that list has had this controversy surrounding it, and it is absolutely ridiculous that us parents, our students, and especially the staff have had to live and work this past month with this dark cloud hanging over us. As Superintendent Saunders said herself at our SAC meeting, our tax dollars have already been allocated for this rebuild. Please do the right thing and invest in our students and community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect time. Catherine Smith. Abby Van Austinbridge, and then Emily, is it Wakem? I'm sorry, is that right? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Smith, and I'll be brief because I've already submitted a public comment to you guys. But I will draw your attention to that if you haven't looked at it yet. I have done all the research for you guys. I have the enrollment numbers for the most, for the last ten years, up until twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, where Palmasola's enrollment dropped. Before that, we were at a positive enrollment rate. We were the only school in the area that had a positive enrollment rate. So if you haven't looked at that, I would urge you guys to look at it because it might answer some of your questions that you asked up the gentleman earlier. I just really wanted to address comments that were made at the last meeting. Ms. Messenger said that, you know, we wouldn't have a vote possibly for months if not if it was something ceremonial. Mr. Tatum, even again this morning, stated that no decision would be made today. We understand that no official decision will be made today, and no vote will be taken today. But I urge you to make some decisions today. We need a path forward. We need to know what's happening with our school. If it's gonna be rebuilt, if our kids are gonna have a school to go to next year. I understand that the times have been changed for the meetings, and so the next evening meeting isn't until April, which is a long way away. It's only one month before the end of school. I urge you guys to come to consensus today and to push a vote fo- forward before April, even if it's through a special meeting. Thank you.
Abby Van Austinbridge. Emily Wakem, and Lauren Bucier. Is that right?
It's Bucier.
Bucier?
All right. Good morning. Thank you, guys, for your time. I saw Foreman and Mr. Tatum at the Town Hall and Cynthia Saunders. I'm Abby Van Austinbridge. I'm a lifelong resident of Manatee County, specifically West Bradenton. I currently have a first-grade daughter there. And I have two younger children that I am hoping can follow through and go to Palmasola as well. We are districted for there. I find it ironic that the report showed that Palmasola is lacking in education efficiency. I've been attending the PTO and the SAC meetings, and last year, we were three points away from being an A school. Three points is the difference of one child, possibly. So it's a school that reflects well on the district, and it's a school that reflects well in the state and obviously has academic success and excellence, which is a reason why people choose to school choice their children into the school. We have efficient teachers. We have effective administration, and it's a vital part of our community. I realize that some of the reasons why we are not wanting to, we are considering not rebuilding is because of capacity, but I don't think that filling capacity should be the primary goal of our school district. I think having schools that are effective and have academic excellency should be the goal. And right now, Palmasola is meeting that criteria. Not to mention, if you do close it and you disperse to other West Bradenton campuses, there's not a lot of room for capacity. And like we mentioned, there is some expansion going on. So I also realize they said that some of it would be districted to Seabreeze. Seabreeze can't handle the influx of Palmasola and the other development that's occurring. And then you're stripping parents' rights and ways to school choice their children and have a say in their education. I know other people have already mentioned and reiterated that neighborhoods are cyclical, and I just feel that Palmasola is a vital part to the infrastructure of elementary schools in West Bradenton. You know, it sits on twenty acres. It has the room for you to make it a large campus so that maybe down the road, I'm not saying this has to happen, if other schools in West Bradenton, because capacity is an issue, they can all go to Palmasola. You can make it a larger campus. Whereas Seabreeze and Miller and Anna Maria and Stewart, if you're gonna expand, you can only expand up. They only sit on ten acres or less. I know Miller sits on about eighteen acres, but a lot of that is actually not used. Oh, well, thank you for your time.
Emily Wakem. Lauren.
Good morning.
Bucier, and then and then, follow that is Janet Coleman. Sorry, you got there too quick. Go ahead.
The main hope of a nation lies in the proper education of its youth. Research studies show that small class sizes, increased rate of college attendance, graduation rates, test scores, and kids are more likely to get a degree in a STEM field. This positive effect was twice as high for low-income and minority students. A decrease in average size by four students led to a twenty-five percent increase in math scores and a fourteen percent increase in science scores. By closing Palmasola, you would be increasing class sizes at other schools, which decreases their education, adds more work to the already overworked and underpaid elementary school teachers, and would cause many teachers to lose their jobs. There are currently thirty-seven teachers at Palmasola, and online, there are only seven position openings for elementary school teachers in Bradenton. Closing the school would cause devastating job losses. Manatee County is still growing. Longbird Point is expected to produce fifteen hundred homes. Aqua by the Bay is expected to produce twenty-five hundred homes, and Hunter's Point is currently building eighty-six homes. Surely, this will bring more elementary school students, which some could opt to go to Palmasola due to their grade school averages. There are currently four hundred and eighty-one students at Palmasola Elementary. If the school is closed, would the surrounding elementary schools be able to handle the influx in students? I myself am a proud graduate of Palmasola Elementary School. I remember my teachers challenging me to see if I could solve math problems faster than a calculator, teachers giving me books, books to read, which I now own in my own personal library, paving the foundation and nurturing my love for science. I continued on to be the youngest in my graduating class at the University of Florida College of Dentistry and became a dentist at twenty-four. I have friends from Palmasola who are becoming brain surgeons, attorneys, real estate agents, electricians. And one of my fellow classmates was so inspired by our kindergarten teacher, who we all refer to as Cinderella, that she went and became an elementary school teacher herself. Is selling the seventeen acres of prime real estate property, which Palmasola happens to be on, worth decreasing our future generation's education? Does the lack of teachers here not seem suspicious? The teachers were told that they were not allowed to take off work today. If teachers are unable to speak for themselves and students who are unable to advocate for themselves, then it's up to the residents of Manatee County to advocate for them. What is the primary concern of the school board? Remodeling the school and providing space for future generations to learn and grow is the clear option if your focus is on education. Educating the future generation is priceless. Without education, there is no future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lauren Bucier, Janet Coleman, Chester Coleman.
Hello, and thank you for your time. My name is Lauren Bucier, and I'm here to express my concerns regarding the future of Palmasola Elementary. If the future future plan is to rebuild, then that is wonderful news. But if the rumors are true and you're considering closing the school, and if there's anyone that any, if there's anything that anyone can do to save this school, I feel compelled to say this. Palmasola Elementary School is loved and wanted by this whole town. It goes back generations, and it is full of some of the most brilliant teachers and staff. Some of the teachers, in fact, have been there for generations, and that alone speaks volumes for itself. My son started kindergarten during the pandemic in twenty twenty and is currently in second grade. I wanna shed light on something that some people might not think about. His educational development has been severely hindered these last several years because of COVID restrictions, and he has suffered greatly. It took us almost a year to get him approved for an IEP plan, and his plan just started this past August. The past seven months have been life-changing. I am extremely concerned that if Palmasola closes, his will, his intervention will too. I'm sorry. I am extremely concerned that if Palmasola. I am extremely concerned that if Palmasola closes, so he'll hit, so will his intervention that he so desperately needs right now. What will happen to the children who are struggling as it is to catch up from these last several, several years of chaos? I cannot imagine if my son has to go to a new school with new teachers and new peers and more change and fuller classrooms. It all sounds so overwhelming for me, and I don't even want to think about my child having to deal with it. That will be a huge setback for him, and it will be devastating, and I know so many parents can relate to this. I think about the four hundred and thirteen children and all of our teachers who have already had to adapt and endure and persevere through so much already, and I am concerned for them. I'm concerned for our school choice because I know that we won't all get our first, second choice if this happens. This town is growing rapidly. New families move here every day. We need all of our schools, the elementary, middle, high. They are all important and hold our future. Especially the renovations should be our top priority or our rebuild, especially for a school that is excelling in education. We will take a smaller campus and be happy for another sixty years, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Coleman. Followed by Chester Coleman and followed by Jennifer Grimes.
Hello, my name is Janet Coleman, and I'm a former teacher at Palmasola Elementary, where I taught first and second grade. Both of our children attended Palmasola Elementary, and my husband also taught PE there. So I've seen all sides of the school as a parent and as an educator. We live in Northwest Bradenton, so I understand the view of people that live in the community of Palmasola. As a parent, I've been welcomed and encouraged to be involved in our children's education. But it was more than that. My oldest, who is now nineteen, was greeted by her kindergarten with loving arms, and her principal would check on her at lunch when she had tears adjusting to big kid's school. Walking to school, the picnics that we had in the courtyard, celebrating educational successes, school plays, children's parade, campouts in the field, PE's ultimate challenge, grandparents' day, the teachers that encourage the children's accomplishments are just a small fraction of the wonderful memories that I have. That love lasted throughout the years with both of our children. It was a family that went above and beyond to teach, care, and love our children. Can't even describe it with words. Then you can imagine the privilege my husband and I both have of being former educators of Palmasola. Again, I witnessed some of the most amazing educators that would go above and beyond at this school. They would do anything to help the children surpass their goals. If you work there, or if you have children or grandchildren at the school, then you get it. It truly is a family. The memories of Palmasola are priceless. Over the years, we heard that Palmasola was going to be remodeled or rebuilt as so many other schools had. Finally, it would be our turn. Our beautiful campus, students, and staff deserve that. I know that the talk of closing Palmasola is up for discussion right now, and I understand budgets and numbers, but I can't quite grasp the thought of closing Palmasola and why this decision would be regretted. It's a strong academic school. It's a neighborhood school with many walkers and bike riders. Moving schools, moving students to other schools would push those schools over capacity in the future, and then we would have more busting woes. And once the real estate bubble eases, more families will be buying in Northwest Bradenton. And what about the homes being built over by El Conquistador area? Why would we even consider closing a campus in this area? Please consider the options of rebuilding Palmasola. The legacy deserves to continue. Thank you.
Chester Coleman, followed by Jennifer Grimes and Alexandra Wilks.
Hello, my name is Chester Coleman, also known as Coach Coleman. I'm a retired Manatee County physical education teacher. I taught thirty-five years at three different schools, Sammaset, HS Moody, and Palmasola Elementaries. When I first started teaching, the inequality between the west side and east side schools was quite obvious. Jesse P. Miller put up a million-dollar bell tower, while Sammaset had a barbed wire fence around the school's perimeter. My how the times have changed. The majority of the school spending now seems to be going out east, while schools like Palmasola wait and deteriorate. My wife and I both had the privilege to teach at Palmasola. Our daughters went to Palmasola. Our friends and neighbors also sent their kids there for the quality neighborhood education provided. Every year, our anticipation was so high as we heard the rumors that we were next up for renovation, only to find the money was sent out east or north of the river. When we heard that Palmasola might be closing, it did not sit well with us or many in our community. Why would they close such a wonderful community school? I heard it all. The enrollment was down. Buildings were older, might not make financial sense. Enrollment changes in waves. Every school I ever taught at ended up with portable buildings when the enrollment wave went up again. Don't get stuck without a school. You will not find another property in Northwest Bradenton like Palmasola's seventeen-plus acres if you decide to let it go. Think about the future. Think outside of the box. Think outside of the numbers. We sometimes get so caught up in something that we forget to ask the most important question. The one that we've grilled our teachers and students with, the essential question. Is this what's best for the kids? Is it? We all know the obvious answer. That is no. Rebuild it. What about the sixty-five hundred units scheduled for El Conquistador? Will the north section of those kids go to Seabreeze, Jesse P. Miller, and Moody? Oh, wait, the Palmasola kids go there now. There's no more room in western Northwest Bradenton. Perhaps we should not have closed that school after all. Is that what you want to create? There are thousands of former Palmasola students, parents, teachers throughout the county. Most of them vote now, and they control social media. I think that we're very pleased when you make the right choice. Nineteen seventy's singer-songwriter Joni Mitchell said it best in her song, Big Yellow Taxi. Don't it always seem to go, you don't know what you got till it's gone? They paved paradise and put up a parking lot. Thank you for your time.
Jennifer Grimes, Alexandra Wilks, and Deborah Clark.
Good morning, members of the board and Ms. Saunders. My name is Jenny Grimes, and I'm the principal, the proud principal of Palmasola Elementary. I'm a product of Mantey County Schools. I attended Moody SUG and Manatee High. I've worked for the Mantey County School Board since the fall of nineteen ninety-two. It was recommended that I attend this meeting and be prepared to answer any questions that may come up during the discussions of our school. As the principal, though, I'm here to represent the faculty, staff, and four hundred forty currently enrolled students of Palmasola, who are all unable to attend this morning because they're at school. I know that you've each been inundated with comments, questions, and concerns from the Palmasola community. It's unfortunate that a single statement made in conversation led to such distress, and that includes the faculty, staff, and students at my school, as well as neighbors, businesses, alumni, distant relatives, radio DJs, and even perfect strangers. I want everyone to know that we truly appreciate the support that we've received in light of the recent news rush around our school. As a school principal, I felt it was important to educate myself on the history of the school that I lead. Although I briefly attended Palmasola as an itinerant student, um, I grew up in West Bradenton. There was a lot about the neighborhood that I wasn't aware of until I spent some time a few summers ago doing some research. So here's a brief history lesson. In the late eighteen hundreds, the Warner family moved to the area from Massachusetts and set up a homestead. You might know that Warner's Bayou bears the family name. The name Palmasola commemorated a single date palm that dominated the skyline across the Manatee River over on Sneed Island. The central section of the town of Palmasola, which consisted of a huge sawmill and the homes of the men who operated it, was located on Shaw's Point. The town also boasted a two-story Palmasola Hotel, a general store said to be the largest between Cedar Key and Key West, a long wharf, and an ice house, large enough to hold a schooner load of New England pond ice. At one time, Palmasola was the largest city in Manatee County. The first Palmasola school began educating students in the late eighteen hundreds on property that is now known as Ninth Avenue Northwest. The original building burned down and a new brick building, which I have a postcard of here, this is worth a lot of money. Um, uh, the, a new brick building was built in, um, nineteen twelve. The Palmasola school that we're here talking about today opened in nineteen sixty, and much of the original structure is still standing. Although the architecture isn't modern, our students are getting an education that is second to none. Palmasola is consistently a high-achieving school, and that wouldn't happen without the family support and involvement that's so evident here today. Students continue to have the opportunity to build happy memories, and they have the most dedicated and achievement-focused faculty and staff that I've worked with in all my thirty years. I understand that the board needs to make wise business decisions, but I feel strongly that we have to remember the business that we're in. We show up every day to educate our students, to support our families, and to continue to build a strong community for the future of Bradenton and beyond. And so much of that begins at Palmasola Elementary.
Even though, even though you were tardy with your comment, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Uh, Alexandra Wilks, Deborah Clark, Margaret Harvey. Okay. So, Ms. Clark, you're up. I feel weird, weird calling you Deborah, so Ms. Clark, you're up. And, and Margaret Harvey and Marielle McCray.
This was my speech. Well, there. I just wanted to say that what it, what it sounds like to me is that y'all are all for saving the school. That's what it sounds like, and thank you, Kevin Van Austin Bridge. Sounds to me like you want to save this school too. So I just have something that wasn't in my speech that I'd like to, to just give you. Has anybody seen some of the new construction that's been going on? They, they use that, that pressed, pressed wood. It's not even plywood, y'all. You know, a little bit of, little bit of concrete block, and then that cheapo stuff. You've seen it. I mean, it's not safe. I'm all for, okay, because I believe God willing, this school is going to be saved. It's got concrete block already. You go out to some of these, these antiques, like what is it, the, the big plantation out in Palmetto? Concrete blocks, folks. We can put new roofs on it, and we can do like, uh, Mary, uh, Cindy Spray said, you know, concrete doesn't rot, okay? So I'm sitting here listening to everybody, and I'm like, let's do it. Let's, the portable's a good idea. Do it in sections. I have two flooring stores, and there's a lot of people probably in, within the sound of my voice that, that either knows someone or some, get, get bids out there. We'll do it for cost. That's the way we feel. We've been in this community for, for, uh, since nineteen eighty-four. Chad went to school with my kids. Love you, Chad. Sorry, I'm not trying to interrupt you. But you know what? These kids made lifelong friends. It's not just about education, but reading, writing, and arithmetic. That's okay, hey? Reading, writing, and arithmetic, least in elementary school. And another thought that came to me, thank you, Lord. King Middle School. Man, that thing is huge. I remember when y'all went, it was little, right? It's huge. We need those students and Stewart to go to King. What's King gonna have, a couple hundred students? We can't tear down. Come on, y'all. Let's, let's not rebuild, but let's, let's, what is the word? Uh, re, thank you. Let's remodel in stages. And if you gotta bring in a few portables, I, I went to class in portables. This is nothing new. So y'all, please. Let's just, let's just collectively say, let's remodel, right? Let's remodel the school. It's, it's already got good bones. Is that a good word, good bones? And the roof, we can, there's roofers, there's the Manson's, there's all kinds of roofers. Y'all know the roofers. But, but as for our flooring stores, we'll give it to you at cost. We will do that. Okay? I'm not going to give you the names of our stores because I don't want to make it icky, but, but if you want to know. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Margaret, Margaret Harvey and Marielle McCray. Is that right, Marielle? Marielle?
I don't know how you follow that, but okay. Um, what is your legacy going to be as a school board member? Polished or tarnished? The laughter the children will never be silenced on our seventeen acres with tree-covered playground areas and parking spots in the shade. Please come and visit the students at recess or field day and ask the children, what are some of their favorite trees and why? Apparently, there's a tree that looks like a chair. Okay, um, there are also memorial tree on campus, and there are some state-protected trees as well. The extension service will be able to help you with that. It's in Palmetto. This school's been there since nineteen sixty. We have sixty-year-old trees. The land of many of the new schools, along with the added parking lot at Mantey High School, have been stripped of the topsoil. The trees have been cut down, all for profit. Stop stripping the land of these schools. Manatee High School class of twenty, twenty-two lost over a hundred and seventy-five students from freshman year to graduation due to COVID. Your numbers are wrong. So please, don't build a school. You will outgrow before it is built due to the low numbers in the last four to six years. Always remember, do ten miles right, not a hundred miles wrong. Rule number one in building the railroad and in life. Also, don't forget the petition. And your children's parade is nothing without Palmasola. Go Doreen. Oh, and that dentist is mine.
Marielle McCray.
Hi, I'm Marielle McCray. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I wanted to make sure that I was able to take the opportunity to stand up in front of you and tell you how much I support Palmasola staying and the character that Palmasola has. I am not a Florida native. I'm not a Manatee County native. I chose Palmasola. Uh, there is something about walking through the campus. It is the soul of Palmasola. You look at the preserves. We have Robinson, we have De Soto, we have Shaw's Point. There's history. We spend time outdoors. You don't move to West Bradenton to be inside all the time. The campus of Palmasola has character, and I would love to see it preserved. I hope that you take that into account, especially when you're looking at numbers that are talking about educational efficiency and where technology might be a wonderful thing. There are lots of children that thrive by having access to fresh air and space and outdoors. And having that choice that parents can make to send their kids to school that they do have time outside in fresh air every day is really important. I chose Palmasola. If you look at some of the private schools around, they do have campuses and outdoor environments. Makes you wonder why. My children walk to school. And they have. They're in fourth and fifth grade. They started in kindergarten. I live up the street from there. Palmasola is special. And I don't think that your numbers can really do it justice. So I hope that you consider that. I hope that every one of you has taken the time to see and walk the campus and see the students and how much we care. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment. So thank everybody for signing up for that. And, um, you want, is, does that, you want to take a break? Yep, we'll take a five-minute recess and then come back and further discuss. Secondly, never once did I speak to any board member up here about this topic. Never once did I say, oh, we should be doing this and we should be doing that because we can't do that. Never once have I talked to Mr. Rinaldi and some of the staff members and other people in the district about what some grand planned was of Chad Choats. I've seen accusations of, of, uh, I'm going to benefit from this somehow, et cetera, and, um, I don't have any ill will towards Palmasola. Um, I've got family that goes to Palmasola, I have best friends that went to Palmasola, my mom and dad, my aunts and uncles. I can go on and on and on and on, I was born in west, Northwest Bradenton my whole life. I don't have any animosity or any vindictive nature towards Palmasola whatsoever. When the question was raised to me about the issue, I looked at it from a, from a strictly, um, approach of, of not emotional and not being invested because I'm not invested in that community, of course, I, my kids don't go there. Um, but I've been invested in communities and schools, and if you know me, you know my background. So you understand that, um, I get it. But my approach and my opinions at the time was a lot had to do with more of not, not emotional, not the kids and what, but as a district, we have three thousand kids we have to worry about, not just four hundred. And I think that, that in the conversation, and it's been two or three months now, right? So people's minds and things change and you talk to different people and ideas come up. And so, um, I, I will say that that this was not a, a decision, or what, what my opinions at the time were not garnered around, I want to get rid of Palmasola and whatever, okay? I truly believe that, and, and part of my opinion, and I'll, I'll go ahead and start, start saying that with what I think the future should be. Um, well, well, first let me go over some other public comments that, that I just want to make sure we get straightened out. Education efficiency has nothing to do with how well the school is doing and how well the teachers are. That's not even a question, like that's, the, the Jacobs report doesn't go in and watch teachers and evaluate teachers and how good they are. So that, that education efficiency, I just want to, I know it was brought up in public comment, it was questioned here from the board as well. It's not about how well a teacher's teaching. That has never been a question, there's never been a question from, at least from my mind, of how well of, of teachers and, and how well, um, it's led by Ms. Grimes, that, that has never been a question. So that education efficiency, efficiency is about the building, the technology that would support education, et cetera. It's not about what you're getting in the classroom. So I just want to make sure that's, in that report, we're not saying that there's bad teachers and, and that, that education is, is not well there. It is well, it's thriving, it's almost an A school. So, uh, my, my initial, and, and I'll, I'll get with the board here, I'll talk about what we want to do here. Um, after ate my curd a little bit, I'll, I'll talk about what my opinion is. So I think that, um, I still have a portion of me that, uh, it's about timing. My initial thought always with Palmasola was if it was closed, that we kept it. We, we kept the land, we kept the park and it would reopen at the time it needs to be reopened. Um, when we saw the cycle of, 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 uh, houses and things like that. We could talk about development at, at all these places, but it doesn't happen like that. It happens over several years, so we can prepare for that later on. Now that doesn't mean that that's the right decision, that doesn't absolutely mean that's the right decision to, to, to wait to do something. Um, I think that, that my, uh, that was my initial thought of what Palmasola, in my opinion, what we should do with Palmasola. It wasn't apartment complexes. The, over the last several months, having some conversation with some leaders in the community. I think that, um, my opinion has changed. I, I would, if, if the board were to say, hey, yeah, let's delay, I wouldn't necessarily be against that, but if, I believe that if we, if we do rebuild the school, I don't know if rebuilding a seven fifty is what we should necessarily do right now. I do think rebuilding it five hundred, maybe even five fifty, six hundred, I think five hundred may be a little too small, to be honest. We can get the numbers later on, I think five hundred may be just a little bit too tight because it's almost that capacity. If you, if they're four forty, you build a five hundred, it's almost that capacity, right? Um, I do believe that, that we can, if we build a, a, a school and it's a, it's a great new shiny technologies, brand new. I do believe, and this conversation may be familiar, but I do believe that that will help Northwest Bradenton revitalize. I got somebody grandma to sell her house and I got other people to sell their house, Ms. Clark, you guys got to move their condom, man, you can't stay in Northwest Bradenton all your life. Um, but I do believe that we can assist, when I say we, I mean the school district. We can assist the revitalization of West Northwest Bradenton by providing a great new school, which I believe could be Palmasola. So, um, I, I think that you look at some of the enrollment numbers, I think COVID plays a part. I think there's some charter schools that pull from Western Northwest Bradenton and, and parents take them all the way across town. Um, I think that private schools pull. And I believe that if we were to build a new school there, starting whenever that project would start. I do believe, and, and I do believe it should be done in probably chunks, um, to, to least affect the school. I believe that, that Palmasola could pull back kids and bring back kids that have left to some of the charter schools, to some of the private schools. And I, and, and I think that, um, there's never been a question of, do we provide a great education in Mates County? I think we provided fantastic education in Mates County and Palmasola is one of those schools. So to me, the only thing lacking is the facility. If the facility is great and up to standard and, and technology is great, then I think that, that, and I'm a competitive person, so I, I hate, I hate losing, and we're losing numbers, I just, we'll be honest, we're losing numbers in our, in our, in our public schools to private, to charter, et cetera. And I think we provide just as good or better education. So if we can rebuild Palmasola, I think that we potentially could be the one that helps revitalize West Northwest Bradenton. Um, my opinion, um, and I would like to, and, and I, everybody kind of talked about this, I'd like to get consensus. We're not voting today, of course, but I would like to get a consensus, and we, we spoke about that last meeting. I think we need to get a consensus today on our direction. The details, that's worked out later on, the design, et cetera. Um, I would like for, um, I think that it's, the, the community has, has, I, I bel, I forget what public comment, Christine, I think you said it, really is revitalized, I think the community has come together. I think that, um, and maybe in my subconsciousness, that was the whole reason for it. But, but I will say that I think that that momentum with a new school could push, like I said, get some of the kids back that, that may have been gone into other schools and bring them back. So I would, I am, I am one hundred percent support doing a new school. Um, where it fits between the seven fifty and the five hundred, I think is still up for debate, I, I really do. I don't think seven fifty is needed, I do think if we go five hundred to five fifty, somewhere in that range, I do believe, as Ms. Rinaldi has said, that we will make sure that it is, um, compatible to say, hey, we need another hundred, hundred kid wings, et cetera, that we're, we're able to add on. Um, and, uh, so, so that's, that's where I stand. So I don't know who wants to go next, you want to go Ms. Forman? All right, so Ms. Forman, you're next.
I am fully in support of Palmasola remaining open, getting rebuilt. Remodeling is just not cost efficient according to what the data, the information we have now, but that's to be determined. But we keep, Palmasola needs to stay open, I have a whole list of reasons, um, many of them provided by members in the community, thank you. But, um, not just the emotional ties, but also the numbers. Uh, as someone said, what, we're going to take our other schools up to capacity and then we get sixty-five hundred homes in Lake Flores that have kids. What are we going to do with them? Um, so I really, um, what I hope to see happen today is that we all reach a, a consensus, y'all see it my way. And that we put it on the agenda for February twenty-eighth to direct, uh, the, uh, the superintendent to, uh, to start
compatible to say, hey, we need another hundred, hundred kid wings, et cetera, that we're, we're able to add on. Um, and uh, so, so that's, that's where I stand. So I don't know who wants to go next? You wanna go, Ms. Foreman? Alright, so Ms. Foreman, you're next.
I am fully in support of Palmasola remaining open, getting rebuilt. Remodeling is just not cost efficient, according to what the data, the information we have now, but that's to be determined. But we keep, Palmasola needs to stay open. I have a whole list of reasons, um, many of them provided by members in the community, thank you. But um, not just the emotional ties, but also the numbers. Uh, as someone said, what, we're going to take our other schools up to capacity, and then we get sixty-five hundred homes in Lake Flora that have kids. Um, what are we gonna do with them? Um, so I really, um, what I hope to see happen today is that we all reach a, a consensus. Y'all see it my way. Um, and that we put it on the agenda for February twenty-eighth to direct uh, the, uh, the superintendent to, uh, to start the process of developing plans for a rebuild of Palmasola.
Just one quick, I'm sorry, were you done?
Well, it just, the, the, putting it on the next agenda is important. I mean, the anxiety that this has produced um, had, is just unconscionable. And there, there's a petition going around by the children, by the students. I mean, that, when I heard that, I, you know, um, well, hopefully you won't need to, but, but I also hope that it's a lesson for the kids in civics. You know, that um, um, coming together and petitioning government is um, productive. So, um, that's, that's all I'm gonna say on that.
I was, I was only, um, and sorry to interrupt, but I was only bringing it up that I don't know, and I guess we go to lawyer, the, I don't know if we need a, um, an actual voting action to get the process started. I mean, if we have a consensus, I don't think it's gonna now change fourteen days from today's meeting. Is my, is my point of saying, let's move forward if we have a consensus here today. Cause there was never a voting, I mean, this was never a voting act, I don't.
In my opinion, I, I think the community wants to know the expectation of the school being opened as it is today in the fall, and if we are going to follow our capital plan of proceeding with the renovation of the school. Because it wasn't listed for twenty-two, twenty-three. So I think if you, if the board decides, yes, we are going to leave it on our capital plan as it is, and the expectation would be, at least they'll know, are you renovating it or building a smaller footprint? When we get to that project, we just proceed and bring the project to the board as we do in the phases of it. Because the board has already approved that on the capital plan. We would only need to adjust the budget based on the size and the amount of current standards, because the board already had it slated. So I, I think it's just more for reassurance with the community. The board had already slated and approved the renovation of, of the school of some capacity.
Mr. Di, were you getting ready to speak or no?
I was just gonna say, you, you can't have a, by your own rules, a formal vote at a workshop.
No, I know that.
Yeah, but it, the, you know, if the superintendent's gonna bring something as a result of just this discussion back to you, that's fine. After, after listening to the, sort of the consensus of the board.
Yeah. I, I was just saying, do we even need to go through that, that step? If our consensus here being saying, hey, we're gonna move forward with the capital plan, what's all about, then that's, but I, I get what you're saying.
To commit to the, to the community, that, that this is the direction we wanna go.
Ms. Bray, she good still? Ms. Bray?
Hello, I'm still here. Um, a couple of things. Uh, one of the commenters said that teachers were not allowed to take off of work today. Uh, I'd like to get some feedback from uh, superintendent. Was, was that a directive to the teachers by someone from our staff?
Ms. Bray, to my knowledge, no one has spoken to us. Uh, the principals in the audience, I would presume the comment was based on there are children in the school that have to be taught, right? I mean, is that, uh, Ms. Grimes, was that what you were saying, that you would have representatives speaking on their behalf, but she couldn't unload the school of teachers because we wouldn't have enough coverage for the children? But no one from my office, um, I, I'm sure Ms., that, that's just the normal operating procedure. She, I know you can't see her, Ms. Bray, but she's nodding yes.
Right, okay, okay. I, yeah, I'm just curious, cause when that came up, I'm like, that's, that struck a nerve that we're teachers told not to take off work today to come and support their, their school. Um, it might be just uh, one of those things, but going back to the uh, uh, attendance of this school, it had dropped in the past year based on the rumor that this school would be closing from feedback that I have gotten, that parents chose to move their students before the school was closed. So that could be a, a reason why the attendance did drop the past school year. So that would be my, my other thing. And, and two, you know, to Ms. Foreman's point, the children, the students created a uh, uh, a survey or a petition, you might say, and to me, their, their voice matters. And I think there's a pretty strong consensus here to, you know, keep Palmasola. Uh, that's where I've leaned uh, throughout this. Uh, my, my questions would be for, you know, Mr. Rinaldi on when we get to the design phase. Um, there would be some things that I would like to see maybe different. I know we have to do this in stages. We always have to do construction in phases, of course. Uh, but a new school is gonna give us a extended history in that region for the next fifty years, uh, is where I would go. And then two, with all of the planned projects in the region, I, I would be more inclined to say build for anticipated instead of um, having to come back and say, oh, we've got, we're already at capacity, you know, five years down the road. Uh, so I would say build more, not less. Um, because I think all the students that left would come back, and then the growth of that community. And that area of West Bradenton, you know, we're gonna get into age thing, but it's a older demographic, and that will change over time. So we have to look at that long range as well, when we're taking into consideration what the capacity will be for this particular school. So that's just additional comments that I wanted to ask about. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Uh, there was comments made about how I grew up on that side of town and went to Manti High. I also went to Palmasola. So I've been refraining. Whenever one emails me and they go, save our school. I'm like, I went there, but I don't do it, right? So I do, I do very much understand your love for that school, cause I went there. I very much get it. Uh, I also very much get the walking. I walked there. So I very much get that. I, I totally understand where you're coming from. Um, and I, and I, I, I get it. I really do. Um, I've refrained. So that's what that, that's what it looks like, refraining. But I refrained. Um, and I also went to King. They've talked about King, but that was the old King, not the new King. And I'm going to age myself, because that's new building. I've never been, I, I, that was pre, I was pre that building. So that's how many years old I am. That's what I say. That's, I'm that many years old. Um, but uh, so I, I get it. I, 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 you know, and, and I think, uh, Mr. Choat, you know, you were kinda getting to, I'm sorry, excuse me, Chairman Choat. Um, I think you were getting to that qualitative versus quantitative, and I've been really reflecting on that recently, the qualitative versus the quantitative when you're making a business decision. And, you know, you, you were considering, you know, the, the quantitative business decisions. Well, you know, and I looked at the capacity of the nearby schools. Stewart has a hundred and forty-eight seats open. Uh, Miller has a hundred seventy-two seats open. Seabreeze has two hundred fifteen open. Anna Maria has ninety-four open. I mean, there, uh, you, when you look at that in a quantitative way, we look at Palmasola, Palmasola is the least utilized school in the entire county at only sixty percent capacity. So I, I understand looking at the quantitative reasons. Um, but then you have to consider the qualitative, which is what you said. Um, schools, our schools aren't economic driver. Um, and um, there's a real community there, um, and a lot of support there. Uh, and not only that, you know, someone um, contacted me and kinda pointed out, um, you know, that the repercussions may not be that the students go to these other underutilized schools, which, I mean, we're hearing that there's growth in Seabreeze's area. Um, which Seabreeze, like I said, is two hundred fifteen under. Um, but most of the other areas are, I don't see a lot of growth there. It will, and it will only happen over time, over revitalization, and, and those are the types of things that that's really what's going to affect Palmasola's population. It's not gonna be an overnight. It's not gonna be the houses being built. It's going to be over time. But um, we do have to consider that. If we chose not to rebuild, then they may not go to these other schools. They may go to a charter. They may go to a private school. We're going to forever lose those generations of kids. Um, and, and I think that is another qualitative uh, measure to consider. So um, for me, it's very logical um, that we look at this and decide we will rebuild. Um, and make it, uh, to me, would be right sizing it, you know, whether it's five hundred or five fifty or whatever, that will get decided later on. Um, but that, I think that's an important thing to consider is, is that future, and we have experts that look at all that and know how things are coming and know the revitalization and understand that part. And you're right, maybe this will even drive it even more, and I love that idea as well. Um, so, you know, I, I, I understand the heartache and the concern that has arisen over time, and I'm sorry that has happened. You know, we, we really hadn't discussed this. We really hadn't made a decision, and I'm glad we're having the opportunity now. One thing I will comment about when we were talking about, like, what comes before us on the board, we do approve the capital plan every year. Um, and I know you, you kinda made a comment about how you'd like for it to come, and so that we start the plans immediately, but it's not planned for another few years. But that's something else that we can discuss when we discuss the, cause we discuss the five-year capital plan every year. That's something else that we can discuss when we get to that point of, do we wanna adjust where that is even in our capital plan, you know, and that might be something that we need to have a conversation about. Um, I know there were comments about, you know, kinda keeping the school and remodeling it, and I was the one in favor of doing that at WIT, I'm gonna be honest, because we added a wing to WIT. WIT really needed it. But um, I was in favor of keeping the school at WIT, because I, I was a teacher, and when they changed the class size amendment, now classrooms are built a lot smaller. So a school like Palmasola with large classrooms, a school like WIT with large classrooms, like, there's some value there as a teacher. You want a big classroom. Um, but WIT was not nearly as old as Palmasola is. Um, and so I think for that reason, I think it makes more sense just to rebuild it and not remodel it. I think remodeling it will not only be more expensive, I think it'll become more cumbersome. And I don't think the product is gonna be as nice as if we actually rebuild at this point, because it's just so old. Um, so I'd be more in favor of that than remodeling it. I do agree with you that construction should be concrete and solid. I, I think our, our, you can affirm that, that's, that is our standard. Every one of our schools is solid as a rock. Um, that is how we build every single one. We do not build it with whatever, I don't, I don't know materials, but whatever those materials are, we don't do that. I can promise you that. They are black. They usually put rebar in them. They pour the concrete in the rebar, uh, in the, I mean, like, they're solid. Cause I've gone to schools when they're building them with a hard hat and everything, and they, and that's what they do. So I, I promise you, it will be sturdy, um, which is important. I agree with you on that, too. Especially on that side of town, you know what I mean? Cause that's more coastal, so um, in short, I agree with doing the, the rebuild, but probably not to the, at, at the capacity it is right now.
Done?
Yep.
Mr. Chatham? Clean up editor?
I'm up to bat here, okay. I have a few more technical questions, and I'll have a few comments to make. The technical question, one technical question I have is, how much, if we, if the school were to close, how much administration approximately do you think we might have, Ms. Saunders, based on we don't need a principal, we don't need all all these other administrative, because we've probably moved the teachers to other schools, but I'm just curious, what would that number, can you guesstimate something like that?
Ju- just in general, uh, when you're closing a facility of such, because the, all the employees are dispersed to vacant positions. But the cost of running the school, uh, and all the utilities and so forth, you, it, it's about a million dollar swing, is what it is.
Okay, great. And since I'm getting smarter and everything, the current plan for this school in our capital plan is, was it twenty-two million, sixteen million? What was it?
It was twenty-two, but those were old figures. When we bring that adjusted capital plan, uh, we would make the adjustment based on uh, the decision of the capacity of the school and with those new current numbers. Uh, I do know that we bring that, I think, is it May or June? Uh, around May or June, you will be receiving the new ca- capital plan adjustments. Um, and so we would right-size that at that time. And if, you know, we look at all of our monies coming in, it could be that it, you know, could be adjusted also accordingly in terms of time, based on the uh, finances that we have as well.
Okay. And what year currently in the capital plan is something planned to happen to this?
Yeah, I know.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
You said twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Done it.
Okay, that's pretty far, I mean, relatively far in the future.
Right.
Okay. I assume we've looked at that, and the school can hang in there, so to speak, with its current infrastructure and?
It's hung in for, since the sixties. I, I think it's probably okay. Um, but uh, you know, we do look at that. We look at the monies coming in, and we, we do adjust uh, according. It could be if, you know, if that is an expectation to the board to, for us to try to see if it can be financially placed ahead of that date. We certainly can um, as well, but we will be coming back before the board with um, that five-year capital plan, so it will be in there as well.
And it would probably cost a lot more to build it in twenty, rebuild it, let's say, in twenty-seven, twenty-eight than it would in
You have to add that inflationary rate percent each time, uh, which is why the board went for um, a, a borrowing, a COPS, uh, you know, referendum, that, that's coming back before you. For four of those schools on that Jacobs facility, um, so that we could move some of those up, because they were in kinda worse other conditions than, than what Palmasola is. But Palmasola definitely needs to be addressed to be concurrent with the other facilities that we have.
So again, I was just doing some of that math here with myself, so it will cost us about, in today's dollars at least, twenty nineteen, nineteen, made about twenty million dollars to, if we decide to rebuild the school at a five-hundred student station capacity, and then uh, I, I guess I'm going through my mind, because there is a fiscal aspect to this that we have to think about as fiduciary members of, of a board. So it's approximately twenty million dollars, that if we tore it down and closed it, we wouldn't have to spend, wouldn't have to spend a million dollars a year on the other expenses that you were talking about. We could probably sell that land and maybe gain, I don't know, two, three million, four, however much that land is worth. So we're talking about a significant, from a fiscal standpoint, a significant amount of money that, which is not an, it's not an unimportant amount of money that we're talking about here.
You are correct. I, I would say um, when you're factoring those things, uh, we we would never really recommend the sale of any school uh, land, uh, as points were already noted. That area will need a, you're gonna need a school. Even if you look at capacity today and say you could absorb it, it's not going to be that way, and there's no land. So um, that really would never be a recommendation from uh, Mr. Penley and Mr. Rinaldi's team for future needs. Um, I think if you're looking at finances, uh, you probably could make a smaller footprint. Keep the budget you have, because if you increase the infrastructure, it's gonna cost a little bit more than his analysis on the um, PowerPoint, because we could spread that a little bit. I think Mr. Choat and Ms. Messenger indicated they would like it maybe five fifty versus five. Um, so you could maybe even be at the same price that has already been budgeted with the infrastructure there to add on, if in time you needed it. We really don't recommend an elementary school bigger than that seven fifty, eight hundred point anyway, because it's an elementary school. You really don't want them that large. One of the reasons we have not sold, when asked a million times, a property by Bayshore High School is for that consideration of need. is for that consideration of need from that Lake Flores and so forth property. But, we certainly can come back when you, the board has a consensus. If you wanted us to make a formal motion of how we're gonna adjust the capital plan, whatever you, the board deems up or down. And just so that everybody knows what the future will hold. But I didn't want the community to think that whatever conversation we're starting building or whatever tomorrow because that, they may have a heart attack over here, cause that's not in their budget.
I appreciate all your comments. The reason I'm asking that is because there are, there were people, there are people who, the reason I'm asking the questions I'm asking right now is there are people who are gonna watch this video later, there are people that are watching the video right now. And I've had comments from other people within the community, they're like, hey, you represent the whole county. You should do what's fiscally responsible for the county. And so, I'm just trying to help people understand, even the audience understand, the amount of money that we're talking about here. It's twenty million dollars that we, that we could choose not to spend and invest it somewhere else. It's a million dollars a year in extra expenses that we have to do. We, we could sell the property now, it's maybe not a smart idea, but we could probably earn four or five million dollars, who knows what we could do with that money?
They're just saying twenty-four to twenty-six million dollars for that property.
That's, that's great too. So, that's a lot of money we could, I mean, it's twenty-four to twenty-six million dollars that we could, so you're, now you're up, you had, let's say, twenty-five million, halfway there with another twenty million. That's forty-five and, forty-five, fifty million dollars of, if we chose to just close the school and sell the property. So, people that are fiscally, and I am, I think I am, I try to be fiscally responsible with our money. That's a lot of money to consider, you know. Why would you wanna keep it open? And to me, it comes down to the intangibles that, I called it the intangibles and the tangibles. Ms. Messenger called it the qualitative and the quantitative. In that it's a neighborhood school, which I'm a big fan of. People walk to that school, we only have to bus six people there. There's great student involvement, there's great family involvement, there's great teacher involvement. And as I've been pondering this for the last, how long have we been here, two hours or so? It really comes down, here's the phrase that I wrote down. It ain't broke, don't fix it. Right? It just seems to be a school that works, where the families are involved and the students are involved and the academic performance is decent. I'm generally of the opinion that maybe rebuilding it with a smaller capacity seems to be a fiscally responsible thing to do right now. Again, I need some more information to figure out, should we plan for the future? Ms. Bray made a good point, like, hey, you know, this whole area is growing. Maybe we should just rebuild it, you know, to this current capacity and say, you know, build it now and we'll have that space, well, we don't have to pay more later for it. I don't know. But, but I'm in favor of rebuilding it at the current capacity or maybe a little bit bigger capacity. I'm juggling all that. But I wanted to have that whole discussion about the money side, the tangibles versus the intangibles so that at least the people out there in the community know that we are making a consideration, fiscal, you know, decision, the tangibles versus the intangibles. Unfortunately, there's a lady in the audience and she's not allowed to speak.
Yeah, we don't, we're not, we're not taking question answering.
I'd love to, I'd love to.
I, I know, I know, I know, but
Sorry to hurt her mouth, not when she knows wrong.
I, I I appreciate it, thank you.
So, the, the last comment I wanted, wanted to make was about Mr. Choate's original comments. You know, we, we try and be transparent. And if, if you come to us as elected, you're elected officials and you ask us our opinion on something and, and we ponder it for a second and we go, you know, here's kinda how I'm leaning. And then, all of a sudden, that blows up into a huge social media storm and all that kinda stuff, then I'm just asking you to think through this. And then, the next time that you come to us and you say, what are you thinking about this issue? What's your opinion on this issue? We're just gonna go. And then you're not gonna get the transparency that you want. So, ju- just think about that. I mean, you know, if you ask us our opinion and we'll try to be judicious with the words that we use. But if we give you our opinion and then that goes out and becomes a, a whole rumor mill that creates a, a social media firestorm. Might ask the, the general public to be prudent about, well, give us a call and what did you mean by that? And let's have a discussion about it. Or, you know, if, if I had done something like that, I would have, maybe it was a school out in Lakewood Ranch in my district, I would have said, well, let's go have a meeting, let's talk about this, everybody come. Which we kinda did, we had a, we had a meeting there. But I'm just saying, if you want transparency and then we give you an opinion, try not to let it blow up into a, a firestorm or something like that, if that's, if that's possible. And then, also, this is kind of democracy in action too, I mean, so to speak. We have to have, you don't want one person making this decision, it has to go through a deliberative process. We need staff people, within the school staff, to make recommendations. And obviously, one of the, one of the possibilities for this school was that it could have closed, right? That, that, that is on the list. And certainly when you're talking about if, you know, the comment that I heard was it's, the land is worth twenty-four to twenty-six million dollars and we don't have to spend twenty million dollars to rebuild the school and we don't have to spend a million dollars to operate it. That's, that's not an insignificant, insignificant amount of money. That's something that has to be taken into account by those of us who are elected officials in the county. So, you know, we've had a deliberative process, we've got recommendations from the staff. We're all talking about it. It, it takes time, it can't be decided or a week and a month, even a month. I know that a lot of you have had angst over this period of time and I regret that that's happened. But then, on the other side of that, that is the deliberative process. I mean, you may have said, I, I would have liked their decision last January fifteenth. And who knows, maybe the person who was making that decision wouldn't have made the decision that you wanted. If it was just one person. Let's say we, we have a superintendent who's a very big fiscal conservative and they just go, nope, it's about saving money. I got fifty million dollars I don't have to spend, I'm making the decision. And if, if it had been a superintendent decision, I'm not saying, I'm not saying anything about you, I'm just saying, if there would have been a fiscally, and it was all up to him or her and we didn't have any input on this, to have, make it deliberative and take a month or two to think about it and talk about it and get recommendations, then you may have not gotten the decision that you want. So, yes, it's a little messy, we've all heard that term, democracy is a little messy, but it is the process. And, and it's working. And I would just ask you to be more patient and tolerant with us, I guess that's the word I'm looking for. If you want transparency from us and we do give you our opinion, try to take that. And if you're not happy with, with us, give us a call or let's have town hall meetings or something like that. But the bottom line for me is it ain't broke, don't fix it. So, let's rebuild it, that's the most cost-effective thing to do. There you go.
All right, so, I mean, I think we're in consensus to keep with the capital plan. And I know the budget process is starting here in the next several months. So, the capital plan will come before us. And, and as that capital plan does, we can then discuss this and move to the new budget, you know, item and, and at that point, see if we wanna move it up forward or leave it where it is or whatever we wanna do with it, so. I don't think there's any other comments. Other than that, I don't see anybody saying, hey, look at me, no, nobody? All right. Uh, thank you for the meeting and we adjourned.